Yeah, so I'm like, hi there. I'm good. It's good to see you. I was with Cheryl and she's very tired. And she looks great. That's because, like, not whatever. That's right, you get it. Um, she's had some tough issues.
How are you?
Yeah, we can. We're gonna talk here. Um.
Hi.
Homeless.
Yeah, and they're supposed to protect the children.
So, I think we can't leave them there. But we're gonna try and see how it goes. But if there's a missing thing, he's out. We're putting him to work. Because I'm not gonna have him blue. So, the year I went to Audubon, we very much. Um, for that first year, I married this daughter. Uh. Then two years ago.
Oh, wow.
So they, they decided. They call these, they ship them off as first. Very nice.
I see that there's a teacher retiring on your theme.
There is.
Is that your wife?
Because her husband was old enough. She wasn't spending all the time. Like, you know something I said.
Yes, right.
And it's a nervous. Do I have to turn the remote? No, it's. Okay. It's all right. Oh, yeah. And then they'll do announcements.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay. I didn't, okay. Hi. Sorry, darling, sorry. How are you? Good, how are you?
So, yeah, I had a college professor. He had been piano teacher. He didn't know of him until just a few weeks before he died. You think that.
It's really.
Oh, yeah, I did.
I would say really, I have a good friend.
I'm looking in the middle here. Even Dave was at the bar last night. Hi. Mark.
I know, that's my son.
But most people, it goes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the April 26, 2022 Methacton School District Regular Board Meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
And join us in the pledge and leading the pledge with Brady Patton from Eagleville Elementary School.
My name is Brady Patton. I'm a fourth grade student at Eagleville Elementary. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, Brady. Thank you so much for leading us in that. Next, we have Lena Najinski, who will talk about why I love Eagleville Elementary School.
Hello, my name is Lana Najinski, and I'm from Eagleville Elementary. Mrs. Holmes and Mrs. Hart's fourth grade class. Eagleville is a place that makes things that are hard to understand simple by letting us see overwhelming ideas every get into small slices of word. Another reason it is great is because the administration allows students to make suggestions. It is also a place where we enjoy the art. In art class, we made clay to replicate food. They arranged from chicken nuggets to Japanese mochi. I enjoyed looking at them because it resembles art and real life. As a part of our art class, we also learned about Vincent Verdi's life and his painting styles. Our teacher spoke to us about Starry Night, and we even got to pay our own versions of it. This inspired many of us to go to different art museums in Philadelphia to see his artwork. Eagleville is also a place where our voice is heard. When being my friends noticed that we could not play with other classes at recess, we were able to write a letter to the principal. We made suggestions about how we could fix the problem. The next day, Dr. Hungler applied to us through the morning announcements. He took our suggestions and applied them. And he did this while still making sure we were safe by wearing our masks and social distancing. By allowing us to interact with other classes, he made our school a better place. Eagleville is not just a place of learning. It is also a place where we are encouraged to speak with our minds and be open to new ideas.
Thank you, Brady, and thank you, Lana. They will both be recognized with their certificate from the Board of School Directors for being junior school board members. And if I may have the privilege to do so from the members of the board, I'd like to interrupt the rest of the meeting here and ask that you join me with the rest of the audience in a moment of silence for Rosemary Miller, an Arrowhead second-grade teacher. Rosemary passed on March 24, 2022. Please bow your heads. Thank you. In addition to this moment of silence, in memory of Rosemary Miller, we have three individuals here this evening that will now come forward to speak on her life, love, and her positive impact on others who have, who she has taught and who have known her.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Erin Thorick, and I'm here to talk about my best friend, Rosemary Miller. About six years ago, my family and I moved into the Methacton School District. During the last week of August, we were on vacation in Florida, and I was anxiously awaiting my then-six-year-old daughter Violet's first-grade placement at Worcester Elementary. My mom had called and said that a pink paper from the district had come in and that it said Kit Markle on it with an X over it. And then there was the name Cynthia Kirchner underneath. So, being a teacher myself, I just assumed that they opened up a new class section. A week later, my husband put Violet on the bus for her first day of first grade, and I was able to get her off the bus later in the afternoon. The bus pulled up, and Violet sprinted down the steps and yelled, "Mom, I met a new friend. Her name is Claire." From that day forward, Violet Thorick and Claire Miller were best friends. Their little brothers Stefan and Dax were instant besties as well, and Rosemary and I became forever best friends. Months later, I found out that Claire also got that pink paper with Kit Markle's name on it, with the X on it, and the name Cynthia Kirchner underneath. Our families were destined to be together. For the next six years, we spent holidays, summer vacations, and every day in between with each other. Rosemary loved to be busy, and she loved going places, and she loved to plan our summer vacations because, again, we were both teachers. She was the least anxious person that I knew, and she always wanted to be doing something fun. She organized blueberry picking trips, the aquarium, the shore, Sunday playdates with dinner. We did free slurpees at 7-Eleven. And of course, her favorite day of the year was Dress Like a Cow Day for Chick-fil-A because she made all the costumes and we got free Chick-fil-A. Because, of course, as you know, she was an avid sewer. Rosemary was also funny, witty, adventurous, ambitious, bold, brave, determined, easygoing, happy, fearless, eager, and independent, name a few. She loved her family, her friends, her community, and her job, and she was dedicated to each of them in her own way. About a month before she passed, Rosemary and I had a conversation about when she could return to work. She was unable to extend her leave and was completely devastated. Then, in her words, once she got better, she could not have the job that she loved back. She loved teaching, and she wanted to teach. She was that fun-loving teacher that everyone loved, and she wanted to continue what she was born to do. Another conversation that we had months before she passed focused on what she used to call us as old ladies. And she told me that she knows we will, we will probably never get to grow old together, but how much fun would that be? And if you know Rosemary, she would always say, "How much fun would that be?" We could sit in our rockers and watch our kids grow up and attend college, stating that Stefan would be doing all of Dax's schoolwork for him, and Claire would be telling Violet to chill out when things got stressful. But life is unpredictable, and unfortunately, she will never get to do that with me. Sometimes, life is not what you planned, but what you plan to do with the time that you have. Rosemary lived her life this way. She truly lived each day to the fullest and refused to give up. I was in awe of her, and I was afraid to go to the dentist some days, and she was dealing with cancer so much, so much, every single day, and with a smile on her face and an attitude that you would have to see to believe. She was the most upbeat, positive person I ever met, and I miss her greatly already. So many things remind me of her, and I hope that never changes. As we go on with our lives, I hope Rosemary's spirit and light continues to shine down on all of us when we need it the most. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Tara Ricky, and I had the privilege of being one of Rosemary's principals at Audubon Elementary for seven years. Rosemary was a staple in the Methacton community for a long time. She was a graduate of Methacton High School in 1996. She started her teaching career in Methacton as a T-1 teacher at Audubon Elementary. Over the years at Audubon, she taught T-1, she taught kindergarten, she taught first grade. Rosemary also taught kindergarten at Worcester and Woodland, most of the time splitting her day, half-day in one school and traveling the other half to the other. Rosemary could often be found walking the halls with her basket, that she would put copies in and tote around her other important items, especially her snacks. She kept a manila folder with her at all times and Post-it notes because she would write down little things that she thought about with the kids, with her colleagues, with all of us. And she would make those notes and put them in that manila folder and pull that out when she was planning, when she was meeting with parents, when she was sharing with her colleagues. Rosemary was what I would call a principal's dream. She loved technology and trying new things. She would record herself so that students could watch videos of her when they were in workstations, even though she was working with a small group somewhere else. She loved sharing her knowledge with her colleagues, and she would often run in-service sessions and MIACS, and her colleagues loved signing up for them and learning from her. She was easygoing and always pleasant, but she was true to her beliefs and spoke her mind, which I admired greatly. Excuse me. I remember very clearly the day that she made her doctor's appointment when she first got sick, and she was standing at the copy machine in the main office just making her copies and talking about what might be in front of her, and all the while knowing she was gonna be fine and it would work out. The strength that she showed as she battled her illness for many, many years was remarkable, and the support her friends and colleagues gave her was a wonderful gift that I know she'll be forever grateful for. After Audubon closed, Rosemary moved to Arrowhead to teach second grade. Although her time there was interrupted, her Arrowhead colleagues couldn't help but love her easygoing personality. When Rosemary passed, the support that came from teachers all over, teachers and staff all over the district, was another reminder of how many people Rosemary touched. With Rosemary's passing, I'm saddened that we lost a great friend and colleague, but I'm most hurt to think of all the students who won't get to learn from Mrs. Miller. Rosemary, I thank you for all that you've given to the Methacton community and for all that you have taught me. I hope that Bill and Claire and Dax take some comfort in knowing how special Rosemary was to all of us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Darlene Balliger-Pirnok. I'm talking to you tonight about Rosemary Miller, who was a colleague and friend. And as you heard, she had over 20 years' experience here at Methacton. She was loved by her family, friends, Audubon teaching staff, and her students. Rosemary was extremely innovative and creative person in the classroom. She was a tech geek, and like Tara had mentioned, she would have her virtual Rosemary there to help her students. And she would use technology in her classroom to differentiate so that students could work on their own pace. She would, she was, she would be proud to show us, or she was extremely creative as well in her home life as well. She would be proud to show us her matching outfits that she created for her daughter, or more like her mini-me, Claire. Her sewing talents certainly showed up during COVID. She started making masks for everyone that needed them. I remember getting some masks for her, from her, for my family, and she wouldn't take money for the supplies. Oh, no, not Rosemary. She wanted food. We paid her with Chick-fil-A chicken nuggets. I also remember a time during the in-service, we decided to visit her favorite restaurant for lunch, Gino's. She was so giddy about being able to have her favorite dish and have leftovers for tomorrow's lunch. Rosemary was Audubon's bluebird of happiness. She didn't call her students kids or children. They were Rosemary's friends. And her students loved her. Rosemary always walked in the hallway, as Tara mentioned, with a smile on her face and her basket. Her basket with all the things she needed for copies and, and for her to remember. Rosemary was the most positive person I have ever met. Nothing bothered Rosemary. She always looked for the silver lining in everything. Her positive attitude carried through on her health journeys as well. The first time she battled with cancer, she planned it all out. She said, "This is gonna happen, then this will be happening, and then I'll be back teaching." She was amazing to all of us, her positive and carefree attitude. After Audubon closed, a bunch of us from Audubon still would meet for dinner every so often. We met just in September with Rosemary, and she told us of her new health journey and how she planned it all out and was going to return here to Methacton. Even as she was in the hospital in December, she didn't want to miss one of our dinners. She was determined that she would be out of the hospital and back with us at our outing. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. During her last weeks, when Methacton called her and asked her to resign, it was the hardest decision Rosemary had to make because Rosemary's goal was always to come back to Methacton to teach. Rosemary was definitely a warrior. However, she was not just any warrior. She was a graduate from Methacton. She was a community member with her own children here, going to Skyview and Worcester. No, Rosemary wasn't just any warrior. She was a Methacton warrior. I just want to say, and I'm gonna take a page out of Rosemary's book and let it roll off my back, the fact that her remembrance tonight was not on the agenda. I am going to change this agenda and put Rosemary's name right here on top so that we know that, and her family knows, how special and important that Rosemary was to all of us. And that we will. And that we will, we are so much better for knowing her, and that this night was to honor her. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight to share these thoughts of Rosemary Miller with us. And on behalf of, I mean, this is a very difficult day in the Methacton community. And on behalf of the school directors, I just want to thank you for coming out and sharing memories of Rosemary with us and giving those of us who didn't know her very well the opportunity to get to know her a little bit. So we'll just take a minute before we continue with the agenda. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to continue with the agenda now. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. There's an executive session announcement. The board met an executive session on April 20th, 2022 in a virtual format for the purpose of discussing matters of school safety and security, a confidential matter involving a special education student, and matters of personnel involving two current professional employees and one former administrative employee. As far as attendance goes, all board members are present with the exception of Mr. McGinnis. Now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a number of presentations. First, we have Dr. Harmer, principal at Eegaville Elementary School. Dr. Harmer is here to give recognition to a number of staff at Eegaville Elementary School for their Award of Excellence and the service to our community. Dr. Harmer?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Zerbi and school board members. It is my pleasure to announce the recipients for the Award of Excellence for Eegaville Elementary for the 2021-2022 school year. And we'll start with Kim Bean. Kim is a well-known and respected in the Eegaville community. She's passionate about teaching, committed to the learning and growth of her students, and always willing to volunteer if needed. When you first walk into Kim's classroom, students immediately greet you with a warm welcome, which is a reflection on their teacher's personality. Kim also sponsors our student council and focuses on students in the areas of service learning. Kim takes pride in her teaching, cares for her students, and is a proud Methacton graduate. Thank you, Kim. Sarah Hart is an integral part of the special education team at Eegaville. Sarah's expertise, educational knowledge, and exceptional student advocacy are just a few examples of her commitment to the Eegaville students. Sarah is a team leader that is willing to take on initiatives that will benefit her students and the Eegaville community. Sarah is a collaborator that works well with other teachers in an effort to always have a growth mindset. We are very fortunate to have Sarah Hart teaching at Eegaville Elementary. Thank you, Sarah. Natalie Pellegrini is an exceptional reading specialist. Natalie teaches students that are in need of extra reading support from kindergarten through fourth grade. She is a literacy leader not only at our school but across all of the elementary schools. Natalie's extensive knowledge of literacy, data analysis, and instructional practice benefit our students and staff. Natalie collaborates with teachers and instructional assistants to provide exceptional reading and writing instruction. As an instructional leader of the building, it is comforting knowing we have Natalie on our team. Thank you, Natalie. Colleen Dofler is one of our outstanding reading department aides. Colleen is able to immediately build connections with the students that she works with. The students respond to Colleen's warm personality and friendliness. Colleen possesses a vast toolbox of literacy strategies. Colleen is an integral member of our reading, our Eegaville Reading Department. Thank you, Colleen. Lynn Yonik is an instructional assistant working with students in first and second grade. Lynn is friendly, reliable, professional, but more importantly, she enjoys working with the students. Any follow-up instructional practice or task that is presented to Lynn is met with eagerness and immediate follow-through. The teaching staff lean heavily on Lynn's experience and her expertise each and every day. Thank you, Lynn. Maveen couldn't be with us here tonight, but Maveen Gower is an instructional assistant at Eegaville and works with a variety of students across all grades K through 4. The first two things that will stand out when you meet with Maveen are her kindness and genuine interest in the success of our students. Maveen is a true collaborator and contributor in our Eegaville classrooms. Thank you, Maveen. And thank you very much to these wonderful recipients.
Next on the agenda for guests and scheduled speakers, we have a pandemic report, and then we have several financial reports. Likely, I'll remain up at the podium for a period of time till we get through those particular matters, so bear with me. And members of the board should have a copy of the pandemic presentation at their table, as well as any of the budget presentations that are there to follow.
Tonight, I will be providing a summary on our pandemic. While it's not over, it sure has made an impact for us so far, an impact that has forever changed our schools, our community, our world. While I'm here this evening to share a high-level summary of our pandemic to date and say thank you to all of our students, our parents, our staff, our school board, and our community, I first must ask you to join me in a brief moment of silence to recognize and show respect for all those that faced extraordinary challenges, made sacrifices, and experienced loss as a result of this pandemic. Thank you. On this word wall, there are a number of terms that were familiar to us prior to the pandemic and some that are new and will forever remain as part of our vernacular. In terms of communication, we were at the forefront of the pandemic, and our communications was critical to keeping everyone informed from our email newsletters, website revisions, data dashboard, video messages, town hall meetings, staff roundtables, alternative event options, signage, virtual meetings, and regular communications with the MCIU superintendents, the County Department of Health, and Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. But I can't say enough about how our teachers communicated with our students, and some for the very first time via Zoom, and how our principals were always out in front, making sure students, staff, parents knew what they needed to know in order for students to gain access to school and to remain safe. In terms of instruction, we need not look much further than the classroom door. Our teachers and instructional aides accomplished a tremendous amount of ground, from learning the technology, adapting lessons to technology, to teaching each other, and more. We all retrofitted our homes to make certain our students got what they needed in terms of academics and emotional support. We implemented asynchronous and synchronous instructional models, implemented K6 one-to-one technology programs, held parent-teacher conferences virtually, implemented after-school boost programs for remediation, implemented tutoring and related service clinics, and so much, much more. All of this was done without a playbook, previous experience, or guidance. I am proud of what our teachers and support staff accomplished and how our administrators and school board led. So, big shout-out to all of you. In terms of safety and welfare, we sent out, we were way out in front with food and meal programs, mental health services, and cleaning and contact tracing protocols. Our custodians, maintenance, and ground staff went above and beyond with all the logistical challenges associated with distancing, cleaning, and the like. The school board and the Education Foundation made significant food distribution contributions of time, financial resources to support our food distribution and backpack programs. Technology Department was able to shift quickly to support remote access and management of virtual instruction. They rolled out the one-to-one Chromebook program at the K to 6 level that completed our one-to-one Chromebook program K to 12. We managed our supply chain challenges regularly and provided support to students, parents, and staff. So a big shout-out to our technology team as well. In terms of operations, our operations took a significant challenge from distancing to staffing to substitutes to supply chain issues to, you name it, it was there. COVID hit right in the middle of our contract negotiations, so that moved to virtual meetings. Our board meetings moved virtually, and all logistical considerations and practical and legal perspective were all dumped on us all at once. Through the help of the pandemic team, the Board of School Directors, and the assistance of the MCIU, CHOP, and the County Department of Health, we took the pandemic head-on. So what did we learn? Well, we learned in-person learning, having teachers in front of students is highly valued. We learned that virtual parent-teacher meetings work well. We learned that balance is important. We learned that a focus on customer service and relationships stand above anything else that we could provide. And we knew, we knew going into this and certainly coming out of it, that daily routines and structure are critical to learning for all students and staff. And that mental health of students and staff must be at the forefront of all of our decision-making. We also learned that teaching, support, and administrative staff worked well under unique, challenging, and regularly changing situations. The school board members took on the most challenging leadership role in public school history. As elected volunteers, they are true champions of our community. Parents were appreciative and patient and provided tremendous support to all of us. And without a doubt, I know it happened for me and it likely happened for you, that my appreciation for what our nurses and our school counselors did during this period of time was unbelievable. We also have a heightened respect for our community services, our police, our fire, our ambulance, our healthcare workers, our teachers, and our food pantry workers. But what did we learn most of all? We learned that we are resilient, our students, parents, and staff, and our community. We are resilient, and we will be forever strong. While this may not end our account of our pandemic, it sure ends this presentation. So if there are any questions from members of the board, I'd be so glad to take them here this evening. Any questions? Assuming you don't have to ask questions for the things you lived. So with that said, we will post this on the district website, and hopefully, the next edition of this is much, much shorter. So with that said, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, and that includes a number of things, and they're all kind of tied together. So we want to make sure that we just kind of list them out here for everyone. But we have a five-year budget review, the capital fund recommendation, the Shannon Del Esco recommendation, the instructional program services recommendation, and a 2223 budget update. So joining me will be Mr. Bricker and Dr. Walsh. There are, and so you know, there are a number of fiscal-related presentations this evening. And as a reminder, there are no actions scheduled for this evening on these fiscal matters. This is purely informational to allow the board an opportunity to ask questions either tonight or in the future, prior to anticipated actions of you in May of 2022. So this evening, Mr. Bricker will be reviewing the five-year budget to audit at actuals to bring your attention to several matters. The first, Methacton's millage rate for 2122 school year is the 10th lowest in the county out of 21 districts. Two, over the past 10 years, Methacton's millage rate increase has been the seventh lowest in the county. Three, our five-year variance of budget to actual for revenue is 0.56% and for expenditure, 0.97%. And we have had fiscal years end with a surplus, and we've had fiscal years end with a deficit. This presentation outlines the reasoning behind the fiscal year-end results. It is also expected that we end each year with a surplus or a deficit. Understanding why and adjusting annually helps narrow those variances. And lastly, using surpluses to avoid future additional costs at the same time making investments into programs and capital is good fiduciary use of those funds. And finally, before I introduce Mr. Bricker, this presentation will be posted to the board presentation section of the website, along with all other presentations this evening. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. I have a fat bum. Okay, prior to beginning the budget review, it's important to note that the information is based on the audited numbers and summarized at a high level. We'll be focusing on the 2020-2021 fiscal year as prior years were reviewed with the board and/or the finance committee previously. The Budget Review Act One Index history, as you can see here, shows the Act One history from 1617 fiscal year to 2122. The Act One Index is used to determine a maximum property tax increase without adjustments, exceptions, or referendum. In 1617, the school district exceeded the Act One Index through exceptions. In 1718, the budget was equal to the Act One Index, and each year thereafter, the Act One Index was higher than the actual millage rate that Methacton School District used. The next slide is the five-year high-level summary of the revenue and expenditures to budget. You will note that the 1718, there was a three-day strike, and in 1920 through 2020- and in 1920 through 2021, we are dealing with the impacts of COVID. Over this five-year period, the revenue variance to budget was 0.56%, and the expenditure was 0.97% for a total variance of 1.53%. In the 1617, the numbers show that the revenue had a 0.26% variance and expenditure 0.81% for a total of 1.07%. If you look on the left side of the slide, you'll see the variant, the high-level areas that were impacted, the variance. I'll start with the local real estate taxes were under by $507,000 under budget. I won't touch on all of them because they were done before. One of the things that we did differently this time is we specifically broke out the bond payments, so you can see how the bond payments and the impact of budget, because we should, without any changes, be able to hit those on the mark. In 1718, the next slide, you'll see that the revenue variance was a shortfall 0.13%, but the expenditures were over by 2.55%. This is a year that had a three-day strike, and in part of that three-day strike was the non-payment of teachers for the three days of the strike. When you adjust for that strike variance, the variance for the month goes down to 1.96% or the total expenditure would be reduced to 2.09%. In 2018-2019, the revenue variance was 0.62% and the expenditure is 1.04% with a total variance of 1.65%. The bond payments have reduced to a variance of $157,000 at this point in time. In the 1920 fiscal year, the variance shortfall revenue was 0.22% and the variance for the expenditures was 3.06. Unfortunately, as this slide notes, you'll see that the COVID shutdown on 3/12/2020 drastically impacted us, specifically with our transportation. We had about $1.5 million of surplus or excess budget versus actual expenses due to not running the buses. As a point of reference, the buses typically cost us about $600,000 to $700,000 a month. And then finally, on the last slide to try and go through to 212021 fiscal year, we'll start with the revenue. There's a lot of information here. The key thing is the local revenue taxes were 0.38% of variance, and that all other revenue sources were 19.15%. Total revenue had a 2.24% variance. Some of the local revenue variances, we had received more local real estate taxes than anticipated as more items came online. We had $517,000 more in real estate taxes, $1.3 million of EIT. Just as a point of reference on that, we were given the EIT information from Burckheimer as to expect. At that point in time when we were making this decision, we were less than three months into, probably closer to two months into COVID, and everyone was thinking that no one's going to be working, that we're going to be out. The recommendation was to take a 20% reduction in the budget. We made a 10% reduction in the budget, so that could have been a higher variance had we not been more conservative on that. And then you have some of the different things that you'll see in the federal. You'll see that we have all the different grants that we receive through the federal funding. And if you go into the state subsidies, you had the $126,000 of special education subsidies. We were all from Peasars and Social Security. And then the other one was the school safety grant. We did not receive that. Going into the expenditures, expenditures had a negative variance of 2.54%. This thing gives us an overall variance of negative 0.3%, which means we spent more than we actually received. Key areas here on salary and benefits, you'll see that salary was only off by $15,000. I think as you go through each one of these slides, I'll go back to my reference. When we budget for the salaries, what we did was we also lowered the amount of money that we put into the substitutes, so that when we need a substitute because an individual is not hired or an individual is on leave, that that budget money would then be transferred into the salaries to offset that and reduce the variance or the attritional savings that has been noted before. So in this fiscal year, you're looking at a 0.03% variance in salaries to the budget. Benefits were favorable by about $1.1 million almost, $206,000 in medical, $256,000 in social security, $330,000 for Peasars, and $169,000 for tuition. However, tuition is contractually obligated, and we fully budget for the obligations of our contracts. When you look at the operational expenses, you'll see that professional services, typically the IU, were $283,000 favorable, which, you know, if you're dealing with virtual school and the start of school, you're not sending kids to the IU. Our professional services and subs, professional services consultants, accounted for about another $250,000. Our legal was over budget by about $1.4, almost $1.5 million in expenses. We did have the planned fuel tank, which had committed funds associated with that, so that was an anticipated $291,000 of excess spending. We had a savings on transportation of $2.6 million roughly, and charter schools, the tuition associated with them was about $1.1 million higher than budgeted, and our supplies about $829,000 higher. A lot of that is due to the grants, so some of that shortfall there is being offset by the grants that you got in the federal, so you'd have the income and it would be a net neutral. The thing that drove the negative variance really was the decision to pay off the North Monaco and the ESCO lease. They totaled about $2.7 million that we spent to pay them off. If you recall, we had previously committed funds for the Peasars, not knowing where Peasars would be. We uncommitted the funds, we put that fund back into the general fund, and we then made the decision to make sure portion of the transportation savings and all that other would be used. That, as you'll note at the bottom, paid off paying those off, also saved us about $271,544.69 per year over the next 10 years in budget cost. It doesn't even talk into the amount of the interest that we would have saved over that time period also, which would be making up a chunk of that $271,000 each year. Finally, on the next slide, you'll see the budget review, five-year summary. I just want to point out the key ones. The five-year average, as you'll notice, is 1.53%. Impacting that, I'll note the highs right there being the strike and the COVID. We would have had a similar outcome in the 2021 fiscal year if we didn't make the decision to make the lease payment, which then spent the taxpayers' money to reduce our overall debt obligations on those leases and save future interest and expenses. The local real estate variance over the five years, that's, you know, percentage-wise, you're talking $9,301 out of $545 million for a variance. So that's actually pretty accurate when we set those numbers. And the local real estate taxes, over that time period, as you can see, we were off a little bit, and they got tighter and tighter each year thereafter. Salary variance is 0.79% over the five years, with the last two years being 0.05% and 0.03%. Again, that's where we removed the money from the subs, and we transferred a budget from salary and benefits into the subs. Lastly, I'm going to give you the forecast for the 2021-2022 forecast. Overall, we're expecting about a $1.2 million surplus. One of the things that obviously was driving this is the court decision regarding Shenondale. So those funds then turned back into revenue and offset expenses. So that revenue comes in at $793,000. That was the revenue that we had previously marked as escrowed, so it would not be in our numbers because it was escrowed. Once the court decision came down, that comes back into our numbers. That comes back into our income stream. The other piece was the receipts from other LEAs. Back in 2016-2017, we were supposed to get this money for tuition to incarcerated students. The money didn't come. We'd been working on that, obviously, for several years, and unknown to us, they finally resolved the issue and then actually issued the payment. So that's another $375,000. If you remove all that information, all those dollars out of there, the actual variance to budget is about $25,000. Dr. Zerby?
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. I think what's important about this summary of these past five years is really to take an understanding that there are unique situations in each of the years, and while we try to learn from each year to, you know, reduce the variances associated with the revenue and expenditures, there are unique circumstances from COVID to transportation to needing to pay off certain other bills that will make the tax levy less and the spend less in a given future year. But I think the key slide of all of this is probably the third slide, and I'm just trying to go back here real quick if I could. It's a slide that says Budget Review Act One Index History. I think this tells the story. If you understand how the Act One index is derived, it's derived based on the Consumer Price Index and other factors that are contributed to the cost of things in the economy. So each year, the Department of Labor and Industry along with the Department of Education developed this particular index number, and then it's applied to our schools. And it basically says, this is what you can't go above without a referendum or what's called an exception. And I think that the idea here is to show that both the administration and the school board has, over this period of time, done its due diligence and done its fiduciary responsibility to come in less than the Consumer Price Index level and still provide a high-quality program and a number of new services and number of new programs that are the envy of not only the state but certainly of this county. So that is an important message that I think everyone here tonight and those watching at home understand. We've done a tremendous job of keeping the expenditures in line with the appropriate spending and needs of our students, staff, and community. So with that said, we're going to move on to the next part of our presentation this evening, and that is the Capital Reserve and Shenondale ESCO recommendations. Now, I spend time putting a presentation together, write it up, and then my business manager steals it off the podium from me. But nonetheless, we'll try our best to get us back to where I needed to be. So this evening, I want to make sure that everyone knows that I want to talk about three things. A policy recommendation, the Shenondale ESCO, and the Capital Reserve Fund recommendation, and Mr. Bricker will be sharing in this with me. Again, as a reminder, there are no actions scheduled for this evening on any of these fiscal matters. This is purely informational. In 2016, the Board of School Directors from Methacton School District accepted the professional assessment of all district facilities organized into a master plan document that outlined the extent of work required, estimated costs, and timelines over the next 10 years. An updated master plan document will be presented in June of 2022. This update will itemize and organize all the remaining and new projects for the next 10 years. The master plan document includes renovations as large as $10 million and some less than $1 million. All of those projects in the original plan and those to be part of the updated plan will require Methacton School District to borrow in order to fund those projects. It is reasonable to expect the district to borrow money to complete large projects, such as those that are above $1.5 million. However, there are numerous projects below $1.5 million that can be funded without incurring additional interest and fees, thus reducing the overall cost of these reoccurring items and lessening the tax burden on our residents. It is my recommendation that we establish a board policy that considers recurring capital matters under $1.5 million each, reserves appropriate level of funding for unanticipated capital matters, provides specific guidelines for the board and administration to maintain the Capital Reserve Fund, and removes projects of under $1.5 million from the master plan document and requires the production, use, and regular maintenance of Capital Reserve Plan document to schedule, complete, and fund these projects without borrowing. This recommendation is both practical and purposeful in our long-term approach to providing for the fiscally responsible means to maintain our schools. In order to realize this recommendation, we will need to establish a level of funding within the Capital Reserve Fund to get started. Therefore, I'm also recommending the use of the Shenondale ESCO money to be moved into the Capital Reserve Fund to help us begin this process. As a matter of history, the Methacton School District Tax Appeal Court case with Shenondale, referenced as SWD 101 LLC and WNR 38 LLC, was ordered on February 7, 2022 by the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, following a three-day trial during which the judge ruled that neither party provided sufficient competent and credible evidence to overcome the Montgomery County Board of Assessments taxing determination, and therefore, the court ordered the adoption of the county tax authority on market values and assessments for the said properties for the years in dispute. The matter that began in 2006 with a taxpayer appeal and lasted 16 subsequent years was ordered, and the appeal deadline has passed, bringing the case involving these tax matters with this taxpayer to a close. The district, as a result of the taxpayer filing in protest of their taxes, began in 2011 under requirements of law, placing 25% of the due tax from the taxpayer into an ESCO account. The ESCO would range from $600,000 to $800,000 over the period of time. It would generally increase with each tax year. The ESCO account at the conclusion of the case ended with $7,193,687. The Capital Reserve Fund currently has $1,584,000 and has on average had approximately $900,000 and as low as $450,000 in the fund over each of the last five years. I recommend that we transfer the amount of $7,193,687 to the Capital Reserve Fund to establish the proper Capital Reserve Fund level necessary to accomplish our long-term recurring capital needs. I propose the transfer motion to be added to the agenda in May of 2022 for the board's consideration. I believe this is the best use of the Shenondale ESCO funds from a strategic perspective whereby allowing us to keep our commitment to our students, our community, and our taxpayers. Within this recommendation, it is also important to remember that Shenondale's paying in protest for each of the 13 years required all other taxpayers to make up the difference in tax revenue to balance the budget. As an example, when required by law to reserve 20% or $700,000 of the Shenondale taxes paid in protest, the remaining tax base made up the revenue deficit with a higher tax levy. The Shenondale ESCO fund of $7 million, as a result of the judge's ruling, now sit in the general fund revenue expense account and will become part of the 2122 end-of-the-year budgetary surplus, if not spent or otherwise allocated before June 30 of 2022. On Slide 16, in my experience, there is generally one goal and three common approaches to attain that the goal, I'm sorry, that a goal respects the use of the surplus funds as with the Shenondale ESCO account. The goal would be to give the money back to the taxpayer, and there are three common approaches to accomplishing this. The first, send a taxpayer refund check. The second, offset future tax increases. And the third, to reduce future expenses. The approach to give the money back to the taxpayer through the issuance of a refund check for all of the 13 ESCO years is possible, but not the best approach. Aside from the labor and the accuracy challenges associated with this approach, one must consider that the net impact to the average homeowner may not be as significant as one might imagine. On Slide 17, you will see that a refund check for the, just for the 2020, I'm sorry, for the 21 tax year, based on the average assessment of $174,400, would be approximately $52.32. Assuming that the taxpayer paid taxes in each of the 13 years and that the height of the tax burden from, the height of the tax would have increased over that 13 years, we estimate that the average taxpayer would receive about $400 or less. The bulk of the refund, of course, would go to the commercial properties with one of the largest refunds going to Shenondale itself. The goal to give the money back to the taxpayer by issuing the refund check is not recommended. It is the least overall, has the least overall impact and value long-term for the students, community, and taxpayers. It is the least overall, has the least overall impact and value long term for the students, community and taxpayers. The second common approach to giving the funds back to the taxpayers is to use a surplus to offset the tax increases in future years. This idea covering an annual expense with one time revenue causes a number of interrelated challenges. First, at some point, the one time funds run out of money. So for example, if we put a million dollars each year to offset a tax increase from the seven million dollars from the Shenondale Escrow, in within seven years, that money would likely run out, and we would not have another million dollars of of its kind to replace it with. For a school district, once the surplus funds hit zero, it would be required to cut expenses or raise taxes or a combination of the two. It would recommend, I would recommend that before we do this, meaning before we decide to offset the tax increases with one time dollars, that we make the cuts now or raise the taxes now rather than later to to prolong the inevitable. On slide seventeen, in another interrelated challenge to using a surplus or one time funds to offset future tax increases in the annual budget, the image below or or on the screen shows that that one time offset in the amount of a million dollars highlighted in gray to offset the budget in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year would then require the district to start the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget with a a short of a million dollars. This means that we would need to cut expenses by a million dollars, or we would need the the planning, to start the planning for next year with a base tax increase of one point one nine percent before considering any of the other increases in expenses related to that budget. Again, this is just an example. This isn't exactly how things would work because there would obviously be some changes in the assessments. There would obviously be some changes in, you know, the the expenses. But the understanding here is you are a million dollars short in the next year, and you would need to decide, are you going to, you know, fill that in with additional one time dollars? Or are you going to raise taxes as a base to get you back to the zero, the year that you use the one time funds? This type of budgeting where you offset reoccurring expenses with one time funds more than one year can produce exponential impact whereby making it not even possible to increase taxes to the level necessary because of the cap on the act one index. So this limitation thus, you know, provides you with one avenue, and that is to cut expenses. And unfortunately, this is called falling off the cliff. In in our terms, doing this presents a narrow space to address future budgetary challenges, future employment contracts and future healthcare variances and so on. Lastly, other interrelated issues of using one time funds in the annual budget will impact our Moody's rating, thus impact the cost to taxpayers for us to borrow money to complete the projects I previously spoke about. At the same time, will eventually impact property values as well. I strongly recommend against this approach to the use of surplus funds in the general operating budget. My recommendation, however, is to utilize the surplus or the the Shenondale Escrow of the seven million dollars to fund the Capital Reserve and those capital improvements rather than borrow to make those improvements. Thereby, you make investments in our infrastructure and support the instructional programs and and all the while saving taxpayers nearly four million dollars. You will see this evening, Mr. Bricker's chart that will show that by utilizing the seven million dollars and not borrowing seven million dollars will save our taxpayers four million dollars. And that's a critical, and and that doesn't, that that takes an an opportunity for us to maximize the use of that of that seven million dollars. Therefore, the most efficient and appropriate approach to the use of the surplus and specifically the use of the Shenondale Escrow in keeping with our commitment to our students, our community and our taxpayers is to place the motion on the agenda for the May two thousand and twenty-two agenda to transfer the Shenondale funds from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. So what is the Capital Reserve? The Capital Reserve is a fund used for long, major long term projects or other anticipated expenses and unanticipated capital needs. Currently sit at a balance of about one point five million dollars. That's after we spend one hundred and seventy thousand dollars that the board has already reprieved for facility vehicles and equipment. Some examples of the items that we would be looking at to target on a long term plan would be boilers, chillers, cooling towers, roofs, which we're getting ready to do next this coming summer, hot water heaters, athletic fields, facilities, security systems, vehicles, paving and grounds equipment, which we come back to you regularly as the maintenance vehicles and equipment reach their life span. The next slide, which you'll see is you'll see the information that Dr. Zerbi was talking about. If we take Shenondale's tax appeal funds and take that escrow, just say it's a million dollars, seven million dollars in total, and we use a million dollars in each of the subsequent years to fund projects versus borrowing them. At the end of the time, we will we will save ourselves about four million dollars of interest. So in addition to the four million dollars, that's seven million dollars of principal we're not repaying over that same point in time. Based on the information that is out there, we are looking at the central bank or the Fed raising its rates to close to two point seven five percent by the two thousand and twenty-three. That's eleven hikes of about a quarter percent each. Will they all come true? Probably not one or two, but my guess that we're probably looking at a two point two five or two point five Fed fund rate. So that is going to drive up our long term interest rates associated with our bond borrowing. Currently, our bonds are over a twenty-five year period. So that's twenty-five years of interest at higher rates than we have currently. Again, you're going to save four million dollars of interest just by using a million dollars each of the next seven years. Some of the projects that we discussed, renovation of the track, electrical upgrades, door hardware, masonry repairs, roofs, Skyview, Arcola, the backbone of the high school wood shop renovation. All these are different items that we've discussed every year. Some of them are in in the master plan for areas that we need to address eventually through the master plan. And then versus borrowing them, these are items that some districts reserve their capital fund, most districts reserve their capital fund for use of items like this so that they're not going out and borrowing these. Some of these districts have various different ways of doing it, but this is the most common way to pay for those items versus borrowing. The total, the items that are on this page total about nine point seven million dollars. So the Capital Reserve recommendations, in May two thousand and twenty-two, approved to allocate the seven point one million dollars, almost seven point two million dollars of prior year taxes paid in protest into the Capital Reserve Fund. This would require that the funds be used for capital projects. As you can see in the chart below, that would increase our capital reserve balance up to eight point seven million dollars. The next piece of this would be to have the board authorize the administration to place uncommitted funds above the seven percent unassigned balance into the Capital Reserve. This would be a way to consistently fund the Capital Reserve so that we continuously can save the taxpayers interest on projects that we should be able to fund out of our own funds.
So from a practical perspective, it's important to to understand that we need to adopt a policy. We need to fund the, a mechanism to fund the Capital Reserve on a regular basis. And in the in the purpose for all that is to really make sure that we we reduce the overall expense of reoccurring capital matters to the taxpayers in this community. It's the it's the most appropriate mechanism for us as a school board to to move to move forward. Now, why why do we need a policy? Well, for for a number of years, we've tried to put money into the the Capital Reserve through the budgetary process alone. And like in every year, there there are there are choices that we need to make, and we make choices and we say, well, we want to be, we want to reduce that. We need to reduce the overall budget by X amount. Let's just take the money out of the the Capital Reserve that we're going to contribute. So what happens is we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul and and what, I don't know if that's the right analogy, but the idea is that we're short siding ourselves by and hurting ourselves long term by not having a solid plan. So, you know, when Mr. Bricker brought this whole concept to my attention as we were discussing, you know, what should we do with the Shenondale tax escrow? This makes so much sense, and it's been something that we've been trying to kind of get in place, but but we really should have a policy behind this so that it commits the administration and it commits the board and future boards to understanding that we have these needs, and these needs are are attributed to a schedule and to a potential cost. I mean, the roofs are going to be on our buildings. We got to repair repair them somehow. So if we're going to continue to borrow for all of our roofs, does does that make sense? I mean, if we take the total cost of all of our roofs over the next twenty-five, fifty years, you know, why aren't we putting money aside on a regular basis, kind of like into a savings account to to build that up to pay for the one point five million dollar roof or the one point one million dollar roof? So those are the common, you know, themes associated with all of this. So the next part of the presentation is the budget update. And so so tonight, it's important that this April update to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget shows a tax increase of a two point eight three percent, tax rate slightly down from the two point eight five percent previously presented. This increase does not include our third and final look on the healthcare, which we now have, and nor does it include recommendations on any additional staff, which I must tell you this evening that I will be making a recommendation at the Education Committee this coming month for an additional science teacher at the high school, which will be presented not only the Education Committee but to the Finance Committee as part of the final budget process. So we'll certainly talk more about that, but I want you to know that we're very close to having all the things that we need in place for the operation next school year. But with that said, I can tell you that our our projection right now, based on the healthcare look and 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 a number of other items, is we're more like likely in the neighborhood of a two point two, a two point three rather than a two point eight three. All right, so again, as as we're putting these presentations together, meeting with the different committees, there's other information coming in at the same time, and, you know, in May, we're going to be asking the board to approve the proposed final budget, which then you will have another option in in June to finalize that budget. The April updates address three main matters from our last presentation. Program service improvements in math instruction K through twelve. They address world language student primary choice in grade seven and eight, and they they address substitute and coverages. So the the first one is the program improvements, and I've asked Dr. Walsh to come and present those those math improvements. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. This presentation was shared at the Ed Committee a few weeks ago, so we're bringing this forward tonight for your review in regards to our three year plan for math. So why three year plan? The data shows, especially after coming off a pandemic, that we need to increase our math scores and overall student performance. Again, it'll address the learning loss, increase teacher efficacy, align those resources that we're looking at now as part of our curriculum review cycle, and also address student and teacher learning needs. So top side view of the three year plan, year one, we are looking at piloting new resources next year, K to twelve specifically at the elementary level. We have fourteen pilot teachers identified. So the supports are will be needed, providing interventions to students across all levels, provide coaching and modeling, working on an instructional model for math K to twelve, and then using data to inform what supports we continue to need for our teachers as well as students. Year two will be the big year where we'll be implementing and adopting all those new curricular resources, which will impact over one hundred teachers, about eighty at the elementary level and twenty at the seven to twelve level, providing intensive professional development and coaching. They'll continue to support the MTSS model and a full focus K to twelve on that instructional model in year two. And again, continuing to use data to inform our instruction. Year three will be continuing to implement those resources, making revisions to the assessments as needed and continuing the ongoing modeling and coaching for our students as well as our teachers. So the learning coaches, we're proposing a three year, I mean, three coaches, and we'll be working with them at least for three years. Again, it aligns with the curriculum review cycle, facilitating professional development. It aligns with our instructional supervision model for our principals and supervisors. And again, it is directly targeted to our strategic plan goal to increase our rankings and our ratings. So top side view of the coaches, again, will be modeling lessons, not only to individual teams, but as well as specific teachers, grade levels, working with students who have specific areas of need, collaboration with the principals and supervisors to support those teachers as well as students. Again, using student data to drive our instruction, provide and plan grade level and department PD based on those needs and assessments that we have in front of us, continue to act as a resource for our students and the staff as well as families, and continue to provide support for teachers while offloading implementation tasks that would otherwise be done by the classroom teacher. So year one, at the elementary, which was includes K four as well as Skyview five six, active involvement with the pilot materials these coaches would be, again, fourteen teachers at those levels have been identified already, continue to provide support, professional development to all teachers, implementing that instructional model, which is key to making sure we're using the resources appropriately as well as the strategies, modeling lessons, it's the I do, you do, we do. Jim Knight's model of gradual release of responsibility when you do a model and providing strategies to support struggling math students as well. Currently, we have two math specialists at the elementary level. This math coach would support those two math specialists. There's additional one also at Skyview. Arcola, again, the instructional model will be our key focus, providing math intervention and assistance during period eight, working with the pilot teachers identified at Arcola, grade seven and eight. And we are looking at a two year algebra pilot program, one A, one B. We might come up with a creative name. But in many districts, those students who struggle in math need those two years of algebra. So that coach would be certainly involved heavily in with piloting that program for Algebra one A. Modeling lessons against for teachers, using the model of the gradual release of responsibility and continue to provide professional development at Arcola for that math department. Very similar at the high school, but the additional coach would also be supporting the CSR, the Curriculum Support Room, providing strategies and resources for those students who need drop in support or additional support. Again, modeling lessons, working with the fifteen teachers at the high school in math. Several are still new or newer, could benefit from the coaching as well, providing remediation to small groups of students. So they would be working with small students as needed. And again, working on that instructional model, which would be implemented not only at K to six level but seven, eight and nine to twelve. Year two and three, continue to support the math resources. Again, there'll be a hundred teachers that'll be involved in getting new math resources next year, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which would entail professional development for our teachers and administrators. And again, ongoing review of this coaching model, feedback from our staff and administrators, analysis of our observations through our walkthrough evidence, as well as data analysis of our student performance. How we measure success at the end of three years, our goal is to increase fifteen percent student proficiency on our P S S A in Keystone, Algebra in particular. Keystone decreased twenty-five percent the number of math failures, grades five through twelve, implementing that consistent instructional look fours in math, positive feedback and confidence from our teachers teaching math, increase consistent instructional practices, and again, that look fours in a math lesson for our supervision and evaluation model by our principals and supervisors. So those are metrics we have in place to measure success over this three year implementation plan.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. In addition to the the math additions to this April budget update, we have also the following. We need to address the world language at the as a primary choice for grade seven and eight. So in order to provide most students with their first choice for world language, I am recommending that we add a Spanish teacher to the Arcola program. You may have noticed that that the approval of that teacher is actually on your agenda for this evening. So that is, that really is the only item out of all the things we present here this evening that is on the agenda for you to prove tonight. So as a as an example, in in this year's seventh grade class, we had ninety-eight students that did not get their first choice. And by adding an additional Spanish teacher, we can increase the likelihood of more students getting their first choice and allow us to address some of the caseload challenges for all of our Arcola language teachers. The third item is substitutes and coverage. It goes without saying that that we've had a number of conversations about the challenges with finding substitutes. This is true with all employee classes, actually, both professional and support. While it was a a challenge prior to the pandemic, it is greatly compounded as a result of the pandemic. Furthermore, it is clear that a continuation of the Furthermore, it is clear that a continuation of the annual decline in teacher certifications in Pennsylvania provides no hope for that access to high-quality, long-term, daily professional substitutes will increase. So recognizing this, under the leadership of Dr. Sergini, we have implemented a number of things, including multiple instances of daily and long-term substitute rate changes to remain competitive. We ran several guest teacher program sessions. We specifically targeted retired teachers. We worked with STS, our third-party substitute provider, on Act 91 Classroom Monitoring Options. We sought and created partnerships with third-party agencies and universities, example, Gwen Mercy University. And we worked cooperatively with the Teachers Association to implement large group instructional coverage as a last resort. Even with all these efforts, we are challenged with meeting the need for substitutes and coverages. As such, I am recommending that the, the following. We invest in more people who, who as employees will be committed to us and we will be committed to them, allowing us to utilize them to provide instructional support and to offload tasks and duties to free up our certified teachers for coverage. So for example, you'll see in the, in the budget that we're adding four instructional assistants at the high school, two at our COLA, and two at Skyview. While we will continue to utilize the current solutions for, for coverage and substitutes, the additional staff will allow greater flexibility and likelihood of daily success in the operation of our program under normal situations and during extreme COVID-related situations. And the last recommendation that's under substitutes and coverages, the administration is exploring, but has not completed, the recommendation that is, is currently inserted in this presentation about providing incentives to professional staff in, in order to reduce the usage of, of days. And as, as such, I don't have a whole lot to share with you with that is my goal, that when we come before you next month, if we have all that worked out from a legal perspective and from an association perspective, we will certainly be keeping that in the budget and then sharing that whole program with you. Right now, I just wanted to make sure that you know that we estimated what the, what the cost would be associated with that. We included it in the budget, knowing that it's much easier to take something out if we need to remove it than it would be to add another expense to the budget when we're getting so close. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bicker.
Thank you. Just to review, we have the preliminary budget to the February budget. You can see the changes that occurred there. The assessments increased, the millage rate was changed up to 2.85 from the preliminary budget of 2.59%. Interest income was changed and staffing changed, and that's the changes that occurred in the revenue. One of the things that's going to be changing in this iteration of the budget is we're going to be adjusting our collection rate. With the court decision on Shenondale, we need to put the Shenondale funds that were escrowed previously back into the amounts that we actually did collect, but had a reserve for escrow. So on the line, you'll see add back to Shenondale, you'll see that in the, for the last, those last three years, which comprises how we determine our collection rate. You'll see that we added in 740,000, 770,000, and 700 and almost $83,000. That adjusts our collections, which then gives us an adjusted collection rate. So you'll see that our collection rate is going 96.93%, 96.99% and 97%. So up above, you'll see that the rates were 95, 95, 95, 99, and 9601. So what changes? So you're going to see that the collection rate that you saw in the last iteration was 95.98%. We're currently, because of putting the Shenondale funds back into the collection rate, going to be changing the collection rate up to 96.97%. So changes that occurred in April's budget. Obviously, we updated the assessment values. We do that every month through the last change that we get in June. The adjusted collection rate, 96.97%, as I said. The millage rate changed to 2.83%, which was down 0.02% from the last update. We updated EIT income projections based on Burckheimer's updated projections. You'll see that there's an extra $375,000 in there. We increased the interest income and we increased the trans, the transportation subsidy for, which it would account for activity buses and the other changes that you'll see with regards to social security and retirement are included with the staffing changes. In the expenditures, going back to February, you'll see that we started off with a total expenditure of about 118.5 on the preliminary budget. And then after that, we updated that and got us to about 118.7 million dollars. I won't go over all the different changes because it's the previous update. Some of the things that are driving this update, you'll see is the staffing changes that Dr. Zerbi previously mentioned. We're going to be adding eight paraprofessionals to at Skyview, two at our COLA for the high school, a Spanish teacher, and three math specialists. So also on that stage, you'll see the budget impact. So if you take a teacher, bachelor's plus 15, step three, the salary is $51,595. We have to pay PIsers and social security, again, fully loaded. The offset on the other half is in the revenue side of $22,139. Healthcare is $27,938. Total employee costs of 101, almost $102,000. Conversely, we have the paraprofessionals, about $21,000 of a salary, $9,000 of social security PIsers, $27,000 for healthcare, for a total cost of about $58,000. When you take the counts of four and eight, the total combined number of those 12 individuals being added into the budget is about $870,000. So this brings us to the overall changes that occurred in April. Obviously, we just went over the staffing. So the staffing you're going to see is the change in the salaries. That's up, down, as retirements occur, all that stuff is included in our changes each month. We have the final workers' compensation cost by SDIC, which is our workers' comp insurance company. We have the substitute costs that are being adjusted to address the staffing and the substitute challenges that we've had. So as we're adding those staffing members, we're also reducing the substitute costs associated with the savings that we should experience. We have security costs being adjusted based on the new vendor and events that could be put into place for athletics. We have technology and fiscal lease that came in, the amounts associated with those software changes. And we have transportation costs. There's $222,000 based on the current increase in prices of fuel. So we had to account for the high gas costs as they go up and an additional $193,000 for activity buses. Activity buses, again, has the offset, a little bit of offset in the subsidy, about So to summarize the changes, in February, you saw the changes in the revenue that totaled about $251,000 of additional revenue. This month, you're going to see the changes in real estate charges are going up by $840,000. That is mainly being driven by the collection rate and addition of Shenondale. That's primarily being picked up by the Shenondale piece that's coming back in. Interest income is going up by about $17,000. Social Security, $21,000. Retirement, $67,000. The EIT, as I mentioned, 375,000. And I'm sorry, the transportation subsidy is going up by $52,000. Total changes over that time period, total $1.6 million over the two, two months. When you're looking at the expenditures, there's a lot of changes. As you can see, there's a lot of changes that occur each month. For this month, the highlights being the salary, medical, prescription, eye care, dental, social security, retirement, associated with the different staffing changes that occurred. We have an increased security of $17,580. We have a reduction of the substitute costs, about $388,000. Again, this is where the attritional savings will come in. And as we're putting in this additional staff, the hope is that, and goal is that we will not need to use as many substitutes, so that needs to be reduced. The workman's comp, we've got the final numbers, we put the actual numbers came in. The tech lease went up about $100,000. And transportation will go up a cost of about $415,000, which I gave you a breakdown previously. So this month's cost changes alone are about $1.4 million, about $250,000 of previous month, for a total changes over the time period of $1.6 million. The current budget status, as you can see, we have a balanced budget. Our budget now, in April, as of the April update, has $120 million budget. Our expenses and revenue are matched, so we have a balanced budget. On the next slide, you can see the key timeline items. And we try and track these things as we go through them. And obviously, we'll move things as they come earlier or later, as they come in and adjust. For May update, you'll be seeing the April assessments will be used. So at the end of April, we'll get the assessed values from the Board of Assessments. We'll adjust the millage rate based on the expenses, any changes associated with that to balance the budget. We have any staffing changes that occur, ins and outs. And we have the property ENO insurance that should be coming in. One of the big things that's being put in place this year is we're expecting an increase in the ENO and property insurance for cyber. There's a lot of cyber attacks, a lot of cyber issues. So that, that area is going to be going up. And as Dr. Zerbi mentioned, we have the third look medicals and we're just working through that. We just got that recently, so that could not have been incorporated in the most recent update, but will be in May and it's also the final look. And then finally, in June, you have the May assessment, millage, and any staffing changes. There should be nothing really left open at that point in time when we get to June. One of the things I was asked to do is include information on SRS III and what we're intending to do with that. So the main thing that we're going to be having is the high school HVAC project. That's going to have a total of about 1.4 million of the 1.7 million. Again, it offsets borrowing, it offsets the interest. It's a, it's a way to lower our ongoing long-term debt. We have the sewer for $110,000 and $26,000 for boost busing and $237, $238,000 for salary and benefits associated with boost learning, all to address the learning loss. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bicker. Members of the board, the, the amount of information that we've given you tonight is quite a bit. And I recognize that unfortunately, it is something that we, we needed to provide. You know, we don't normally come to you with the Shenondale matter and we certainly have, have all these other things that are intertwined in the decisions that, that we as a, as a collective member of 10, a board of 10 need to determine. So with that said, we'll open the floor up to some questions and certainly knowing that you might have more questions between now and our, our May work session slash special meeting. So at the special meeting, several of these items, including the proposed, again, proposed final budget, will be on the agenda for your consideration. So, so all of our committees, the education committee will see a, a recommendation on a science teacher. The finance committee will see another update to this whole budgetary document prior to it coming to the board at the work session slash special meeting. So with that said, Madam President?
Could I just recommend, we have a lot of questions, because I think there's like five presentations here. Could we just go one by one, just go to each presentation and see if there's questions just to not get it confused of what we're talking about?
We certainly can. So let's start, and I, and I know I, I put some questions out for the pandemic report, so there's nothing on that. How about the five-year budget review? And that was the part where we, we looked at the history with the Act One index and where we fell and then all the rationale associated with the surpluses and deficits associated with those, those five years. It also included the forecast of about, I believe, $1.5 million, uh, $2 million, $1.2 million of forecast ending this fiscal year. Any questions on the five-year review? Mr. Winters?
On page 11, Tim, I don't recall for the 2021 expenditures, the $1.1 million of tuition. It seems extremely high.
What was the page again? I'm sorry?
11. On ours, I think your, your pages were off a page. It's the, the expenditures for 2021.
If I could jump in, I know it is for the charter schools.
Yeah. So there's about, so that, that is tuition that's not just charter schools. So it is charter schools and other outplace services. So I just want, it's not, so I know you're going to look at the charter schools. It was about, I think we budgeted recovery of about $600,000. So a bulk of that is the charter schools, because if you remember, we, we, in top of our budget, we committed funds this year of about $603,000. So that's how you would get to, that was assuming 50% of the people came back. So it's almost about $1.2 million that we had for additional outplaces. Our charter school students typically were around, running around 60 students in regular education and 10 in special education. And I think that year we jumped up to 100 and, close to 120, something like that. I have to look back at the report. So there was a significant increase in the number of students that went to virtual charter
Any other questions on the budgetary review? Ms. Kangkro?
No, my only comment is just to, on page 13, where's the 21, 22 forecast, what's highlighted in yellow is a one-time variance. So I just want to put that in there to show you guys that when we're looking at the surplus, that one-time variance is that, again, resolution of a 16, 17 open matter and then putting the Shenondale into escrow in the middle of this year. So I just want to point that out.
Yep, that's correct. Any other comments on the, or questions on the five-year budget review? Seeing no other comments on the five-year budget review, the next item would be the capital fund recommendation. And so the capital fund recommendation really is a, a number of things. I'm sorry? Yeah. Well, okay, in, in order of the presentations, yes, so the, it'll be the, the capital reserve and the Shenondale escrow recommendations. Any questions on any of that? Ms. Drummond?
I just had a point of interest with the Shenondale escrow, the scenario of giving check refunds to homeowners or to property owners. Is that, the amounts there, is that just a straight math amount estimated? Or does that include postage and labor for calculations? It's, or is it just math?
Yeah, it's, it's the closest we can do without doing the full calculation. So it would, it will likely be less than that $52. And it doesn't include expenses associated with all of that. So as an example, it will take time within the business office. It'll also take, it'll require some support from the county assessment office as well. And, and of course, you know, we wouldn't release any money until we accounted for all 16 years of the matter. So I would imagine this would take several months, if, if not longer, to, to process. I've never gone through such a situation, so you know, it would be, it would be a learning experience for, for myself as well. It's, it's just, while I can't, while I believe it can be done, the, the data is probably there and it's a matter of, you know, if that's what the will of the, of the, of the board is, it certainly can be done. It's just not, the value that you'll get from that decision will be less than the other options that you have before you.
No, I was, I was just curious about that.
Yep.
My other questions are about, about the capital reserve. So I understand putting this money into, into the capital reserve. My, I guess I'm, because it's for infrastructure facilities, I just want to make sure then is the philosophy that it gives us some breathing room then in our budget to continue or to implement new programming and, and those kinds of things? So it's not just the infrastructure?
Well, 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 right. Well, our infrastructure supports the programs. So as an example, you know, you will see next month, a presentation on the strategic plan. And in the strategic plan, one specifically infrastructure item that will be added is a Fab Lab. And that is a, you know, not, 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 you know, kind of getting all into that today, but that's an infrastructure, a, a build that will require capital resources to support that program that then, then has as a, as, as, as an impact on all programs, from art to music, to tech ed, to science and so forth. So, you know, it, it's stuff like that. But I think the key element to remember is Mr. Bicker showed that on page 21 of the presentation under master plan projects, like these are projects that are already identified that are in need of getting completed. And as an, as an example, we have $1.5 million in the capital reserve now. So having $9.6 million of things that we know we need to do and only $1.5 million in the capital reserve, the, the only thing you can do to get those done is borrow. And by borrowing against, you know, you know, for borrowing for those, you're actually spending more than you need to if in fact, we had a policy that created the mechanism that outlined these are If in fact, we had a policy that created the mechanism that outlined these are the things that we're going to fund under the Capital Reserve. This is how we're going to contribute dollars to the Capital Reserve. And using the $7 million from the Shenondale Escrow to start that process to allow us the breathing room, as you mentioned, in order to get that work done. Because if we're going to say we're going to get this done and we're going to start with 1.5 million dollars. Well, when's the first project? Once we do the first project, we're going down down to $200,000. And then how are we going to fund that back? So so this is this is an opportunity. It's an it's a result of a of a challenge long term. I wanted to be clear with you that, you know, the the Shenondale Escrow put a burden on the rest of the tax base. You know that. I know that. Everyone knows that. At the end of the day, we need to decide what's the best thing for our community long term. And by by knowing that we have facilities and we have and facilities need to be repaired. We put a plan in place, we commit ourselves and we use the Shenondale funds to start that process and to, you know, be more responsive than ever to our taxpayer needs and to our student needs.
I have a couple more, sorry.
Sure. Is Don't be sorry. That's what we're here for.
When you when you talk about the Capital Reserve, is there a is there a standard percentage to budget? Or is there a recommended amount that districts typically keep in their Capital Reserve Fund?
So depending on the school district that you talk to, there's to one school district puts it in committed funds, which I don't understand why, but most of the other ones then would put it into capital reserves. The capital reserve funds typically on those school districts range somewhere between 5 to 10% of their annual budget.
And so so I I think what we 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 don't, we don't know what the right number is. So what we what we have to do, and when I say the right number, we have to look at the annual generate the general operating budget on an annual basis and say how much money from that budget? And what projects and what timelines and and anticipated costs are, and marry a number. We don't have that for you this evening. But but knowing that the the principle of understanding that, having the fact that we would have 7 million, possibly 8 million dollars with the extra million that we have in there now. And then putting that plan together, knowing that we're going to put, you know, $500,000 in or $300,000 or whatever the amount is. We know that we're going to be building that up and we're going to be drawing and there's going to be a balancing act through the years so that, you know, we're not doing all, you know, 1.5 million, three 1.5 million dollar projects in a row. We're going to, we're going to space that out so that we're keeping it operationally appropriate as well as keeping the fund possibly probably at a certain maximum level so that we know that going forward, we can take care of the projects in time. And we are being responsible with 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 those resources.
And my last question, when you talk about making it policy to use this money for the capital expenses. Is that an administrative policy or is that a school board policy that we're going to see through the committee?
Yeah, I recommend that it's a policy that the school, the Policy Committee of the Board with with some advisement from the Superintendent and the Business Manager, you know, provide you some some outlines we could, but but I would really like for the policy to committee to be the ones that that draft that final policy and make the recommendation. But it should be a board policy because then it then it then only allow, if it's going to be changed, it requires, you know, you know, five members of the of the board to to change that policy. And that in turn, you know, you know, solidifies the commitment to our students, to our community and to our taxpayers by having that policy in place.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Yes.
I probably would have had more questions about the Capital Reserve, but Mr. Booker did a nice job at property, kind of giving me a preview. So thank you for that. My only question, and you talked about there's three goals for the Shenondale Escrow. You talked about on the slide, send each taxpayer a refund check, offset future tax increases and reduce future expenses. And then you made a comment that it is not your suggestion that you take one time money and put it in that. And I know I'm going to get this question, so I figured I'll ask now. I guess it was seven years ago before Paul and I were on the board. You did use a one time fund of selling the buses for a zero tax increase. So I'm just curious why the strong recommendation not to do so this time, but such a strong recommendation to do so seven years ago.
Well, that's a good question, but it wasn't a strong recommendation seven years ago. It was a recommendation not to do that. But that's what we produced as a as a final budget for that particular year. But what I can tell you is what I presented here is one goal is to give the money back to the taxpayers with three general ways of that normally being considered to get done. So it's not three goals. It's just one goal, giving money back to the taxpayers. You either give it back to them in a check or you give it back to them in offsetting future one time tax increases. Or you offset or you you take care of future expenses. So it's three ways, one goal to address that. Other questions? Ms. Perdue.
So while we're talking about, I guess, the giving the money back, I know I think Mr. Booker talked about a large amount of that will go back to Shenondale. What is the large amount or what percentage are you talking about?
I I I don't know, given they're they're they are they are number one, they're they're the largest, so they would get the largest check, whatever that whatever that means. I I'm sorry, I don't have that that figure.
And I guess, I mean, I still have, and I know we have more time and to craft more questions for this, but when I think about it, I think a comment was made about a mechanism to implement a plan to fund the Capital Reserve. And I know you're thinking through policy, but it seemed like right now, what we're what you're recommending is to take action. And we have a list of potential. I don't even know what you call it, potential projects, but there's no timelines as far as when these projects are needed or anything. We just have an amount here. And I mean, based on when these projects will be, I don't know if these amounts hold up. And then so without having a list, I mean, just having a list, there's no priority, there's no timelines to wait.
Yeah, Ms. Perdue, these are all in the master plan. So they they have timelines, they have they have a number of different. This is just a representation of what some of those projects are to to emphasize the fact that there are known expenses available to us in the future that have been already predetermined. But if you if you want all the other details on them, we can send you the updated master plan document.
Yeah, I just have a pro. I mean, I just have a concern about the recommendation as far as putting this in Capital Reserve if we've already stated, and I mean, I guess that's where policy come in, but if we have already stated that we haven't done a good job at it in the past where we may have come back to, I guess, borrow money from it when we needed it. So I just I don't know if I I at this point, I don't know how I support this, just knowing that we are going to take action without having a policy in place for it.
Well, you would you would you need to do one of two things. One, you need to take action on the use of the Shenondale Escrow dollars prior to June 30. Otherwise, that will, you know, automatically be put into the unallocated fund balance, which can't be higher than seven, or actually higher than 8%, but by practice, our board has not allowed it to be higher than 7%. So at some point before June 30, we need to decide what we're going to do with the Shenondale Escrow. And that so the 7.1 million dollars, we need to make a determination on that. And so my recommendation, you you can, you can decide to put it in a committed fund and then make a determination later about where you want, what you want to do with that. My recommendation is not to do that because when you put that in a committed fund, the committed fund stays in the actual general fund, which then on the on the audited report shows that that would actually be a surplus. If it is put into the capital fund, as we're recommending, the the funds can only be used then for capital resources, whether it's for projects that are on this list here or for future projects as part of the Capital Reserve. And and can and then will will not be part of a a budgetary surplus. So I think if if Ms. Perdue, if your concern is whether or not we have a policy in place to use the Shenondale Escrow dollars to fund the Capital Reserve and ongoing expenses. And we don't have that in place against the the concern that we have all these other projects that are there. We certainly can use the 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 money for the projects for next year as an example, rather than borrowing for those projects. But knowing that the projects for next year are likely going to be rather large with with wealth based on the timeline. So we were, what's on the timeline is the high school HVAC project, which is anywhere between nine, 10, possibly with inflation going to be 11 million dollars. So that's not something we would commonly come to you and say, hey, we ought to use the Capital Reserve Fund to pay for that. That would be something you would normally borrow for. But you could take the 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 7 million dollars and just borrow 3 million dollars if it's a 10 million dollar project. Regardless of whether or not there's a policy in place prior to June 30 or not, moving the money to Capital Reserve allows you to pay for the the projects for next year or to pay for the future projects as part of the recommendation. So either way, it's it makes sense. And if the board needs more time to determine whether or not they want it in the the recommendation that that we're making here, they can certainly buy themselves time by just moving it to the capital, using it whenever they see appropriate. And then putting a policy in place if if in fact, they want to put that recommendation in recommendation into place. I know that was a little long winded, but I wanted to make sure I was I was thorough in that response. Are there any other questions on the on that particular part of the presentation? Mr. Yang, sorry.
Thanks. Just just a quick question around the, and I understand the Capital Reserve potential project list refers back to a master plan that's spread over X amount of years. But in regards to the methodology on how we're calculating the amounts, I'm just curious. How is that? How are those costs estimated? Are we building in a hedge or a risk premium? Like, how's that? How's that calculated? Is there CPI or some type of index added? Just
Yeah, I'm going to ask our Facilities Director. He's he's intimately involved in working on that particular matter of this. So we'll we'll get his response.
Yes, we have worked in the the numbers right now. We added last year, it was a 5% to increase the numbers for the capital project list. So on the master plan, those numbers were as well as each year as we move forward, we will look at those numbers and increase them also.
And that's inclusive of architecture, engineering, labor, construction, et cetera. From an estimation standpoint.
From an estimation standpoint, yes.
That's helpful.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the original estimations were were done by AEM Architects who did the original review of all the facilities. And then they've been updated by our owner's rep, Fidavia, over the over the past several years. And again, in in the meeting, the the Property Committee will be seeing the updated draft here in the May meeting. And then we should have the final document for the new 10 years in June. Other questions for members of the board on on this matter? Ms. Kangru?
No, just two comments. I would say that the oversight of the Facilities Committee will be looking at these projects that are going to be chosen to use the Capital Reserve, correct? So this list of projects that you have here, it will go through the Facilities Committee to make sure we're picking new projects.
Absolutely. Yeah, the again, this is this is a representation of of what's before us and doesn't even include everything. These are just some of the projects that we pulled off the list. Our our initial thought is that it would be that the stuff that would be funded under the Capital Reserve Fund would be projects under 1.5 million dollars. And that's a lot of our roofs. That's a lot of the things that Mr. Booker listed on, I believe it was slide 19. And that gives you an idea of of what some of those projects are. Now, you got you got to understand that some of those are 25 year projects, meaning that a roof will last, you know, 25 years. Some of them are only 10 year projects. So what what happens is you you need to put an appropriate schedule together to say, hey, we think with with level funding in the Capital Reserve, we want to keep 8 million dollars in there as a running rate. And then we got to say, well, how many projects can we put against that on a regular basis? In order to make sure that we can fund all the projects out 25 years so that there's money coming in on a regular basis. We might be spending in one year 1.5 million dollars, but only putting 300,000 in. But we know that the next year's project is only going to be 500,000. And so there's a there's a there's a there's a balancing act and all of that. But it's really, it's really a matter of just proper planning and estimation that can really, you know, leverage these these Shenondale funds and this process going forward. It's a better use of of the funds.
So what did you say currently our best practice is we we're borrowing for any type of facilities?
Everything.
Everything that we do, we proactively borrow versus do a best practice. I think that's an important point to to share is that we're borrowing for anything that we're doing as far as a facilities improvement.
And and it's costing us more, it's costing our taxpayers more. So as Mr. Booker presented, he said, if we if we didn't borrow for this 7 million dollars that that is coming to us from Shenondale, we would save the taxpayers 4 million dollars over the 25 year period.
Yeah, the only other thing I would definitely recommend is I know we generally give some idea of what other school districts are doing, but if, you know, Mr. Booker, if you're able to provide to us and gather some best practices of some districts around us of what they do to do, what do they, how do they perform these projects, you know, and just collect that for us would be great.
Sure, I'll I'll use one of the better programs that I saw, which is Springfield. So they plan all the way, taking care of their boilers, their chillers, their vehicles. They have a plan, they have a 15 year plan that goes over when they're going to need to get roofs, when they're going to get that stuff. And right now, they're actually getting into when they're going to have to start replacing the furniture at each building. So typically, what Springfield does is they have to build a building or borrow for it. But the ongoing needs of a school district, the known items that they have, plus some cushion for unknown events to come in. That's one of the things. Some other school districts have the money that they come in, they plan the projects out and they borrow it over time. So let's say it's a 10 year program, you're going to need 20 million dollars to do to do everything, 2 million dollars a year. One year maybe 500,000, the next year might be 3 million dollars. So it's going to be up and down, but the average you would be putting in then would fund it over that 10 year period. What it's doing is, think of it this way, you either pay cash for it or you can put it on your credit card. Your credit card is going to cost you money. It's going to cost you the interest and fees associated with that. Because it's not just the interest associated with borrowing, it's also the fees that go with that. So the long term savings to the taxpayer would be if we can take care of some of these projects and pay them in cash, we'll ultimately save the taxpayers of money on that interest over the time that we have to borrow it.
And then the last question I have is the Capital Reserve, what kind of account is this money placed into? Do they get any interest income on this?
Interest income is relative.
Not that it would be good now, but I understand that.
So actually, what we do is we we try and put stuff that we know we're not going to need for long periods of time into I think we just put about a million and a million and a quarter into a CD, a three month CD. So we're trying to do as much as we can for little short periods of time. We don't have a lot to put in there, but let's say we're going to have a larger and I would be more apt to to invest a million, 2 million dollars for a year and try and gain rates. We always look also for CDs that are breakable in case rates go up, which we're intending on. So maybe we'd look for a laddered approach on that on those funds, which would mean staggering out so that each money comes free and free and free every so often.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the Capital Reserve? Not seeing any other questions about the Capital Reserve. We'll go into the budget presentation. The April budget update. Are there any questions about the the budget update? Any questions related to the additional staff? Any other matters, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, the one question I have, there are two questions straight out, is the incentive program, is that? What do you? I know that you're looking at it specifically. Is it all labor groups or is it the specific labor labor groups or some labor groups or the incentive to, you know, not take their personal days or whatever you're proposing?
Yeah, we we looked at all all groups, but it's likely that our recommendation will be a subset of all the groups.
And then, Tim, you had described described the activity buses with a fairly large number, but then the number on the final summary was even larger for transportation. Is that related to? related to fuel? Or can you describe the transportation increase? I think it was $400,000 since February?
Yeah, so in the $400,000, $222,000 is due to fuel. To run the activity buses for Methacton School District, it costs roughly about $40,000. Okay, that doesn't seem like it's that much. However, once you run an activity bus for Methacton School District, you now open up an activity bus to every non-pub school, which is roughly 50 that we support now. I know specifically of four schools that have asked for an activity bus, so when budgeting for the activity buses, I had to put those four schools in, knowing that they've already asked for it. So I can't pretend like they haven't asked for it. So that's factored into it. As a conservative, because if other private schools decide, hey, you know, I want my sports team to get a ride home, or something like that, even though we may be using it for something else, we would have to offer it to them. Now, what we're currently doing with the boost is learning loss, learning loss. It's only two days a week, it's not an activity bus, and it's specifically for learning loss, which is funded by the grant. So it doesn't, it's not the same as an activity bus where you're just running it for sports or after-school clubs or anything. So if anyone was running a learning loss and could demonstrate that, we would drive them currently, but no one's doing that currently.
Yeah, I think I would like to hear more information about the possibility of using the activity bus. I don't know if there's something we can, I realize that it's a little bit of a dart throw and a little bit of participation and being able to coordination with other sport teams. But understanding that you're more or less spending $40,000 locally and then $160,000 for Germantown Academy or wherever is something that I would like to consider. But also, just sort of, the other underlying question there was, is that there's a fuel effect here as well? Is that in this April update? Because I believe we discussed in March finance about you were paying $263 for diesel or something like that. And that was all the way through the end of the year, but obviously July 1st, that's not going to be the rate.
It was $163. I reminisce on those days.
You speak up a little bit, Tim.
It was $163. I wish we could go back to those days. I wish I could lock in a couple hundred thousand gallons more. Yes, the fuel increase, we're looking at somewhere around $260, $270 for diesel fuel right now, and about $245 for regular fuel. So we have to buy that. So we buy about $40,000, $40,000 gallons of regular fuel and 125,000 gallons of diesel fuel. So the number, that 222,000 accounts for the increased fuel costs associated with that price raise. Hopefully prices come down. We get daily updates from our trading partners, and they, right now, we're just not going down.
So you're saying you're going to fill the tank at this rate, more or less, for this year, right? And then next year, you're accounting for it in the budget to be paying something closer to the 405 or whatever it ends up being?
Yeah, so you buy a year at a time. You're buying it on the future market. So I bought 125,000 gallons of diesel fuel at an average of $1.63. So as we go through each, every month, we're spending somewhere between $7,500 gallons on a short month, all the way up to 15,000, 20,000 gallons on a longer month. So we burn out that 125,000 gallons of diesel from July to June. Try and keep a little bit left over, because you have to start the next school year with something, and you want to give yourself some time with the pricing in case you need to hedge. We also have about 40,000 gallons that we buy for regular fuel for the vans, the district vehicles, the grounds equipment. So we have to, we buy that also on the future market. Again, that pricing goes from July 1st to June 30th of the following year. So right now, when I'm given the prices that I'm looking for, I'm telling you what the cost of the fuel will be for next year, starting July 1.
Yeah, and then just as a comment, I definitely support changing the collection rate up to the 97 from the 96 that we've experienced over the last three years, and hopefully there is no additional pay under protests coming forward here. The other one that I wasn't sure about was the EIT income of 375. So that you're saying that, is that just the latest information from an update perspective, or you're getting that from?
So Burckheimer collects all the EIT. They have all the information, they have all the different roles, they have the different updated information on collections, what's going on, the collections, the amounts coming in. So each year, since I've been here, I've been asking Burckheimer to provide me estimates. And then each year, we then put that into the budget. So typically been pretty good. Obviously, COVID threw off the one year with regards to hedging for how much, how many people would be out of work and not knowing such a short period of time and having no data. But the latest update that Burckheimer gave us was an increase in EIT revenue of $375,000.
So based on what's going on in the labor market, is that a larger increase, I would think, than normal?
Yes.
Okay. So it's in line with people getting 4%, 5%, 6% raises in some areas?
Yeah, our EIT number is going up drastically, yes.
Other questions on the budget? Not seeing any other questions. Thank you for your time this evening on these matters. Again, you'll be able to ask questions between now and our May work session slash special meeting. In addition, there will be updates to all of this information, you know, prior to that meeting, that'll come through the Education Madam President, that ends our guest and scheduled speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Next, we have reports. Do we, Ms. Reese, do you have the IU?
I've really said most of what I wanted to say at the work session just about the day on the Hill on Monday. I don't know if you want to share any of your experience, Liz, but the rest was pretty normal business, other than it was our first in-person meeting since the pandemic. So it was a long one, and we will meet again tomorrow. But one note is, you know, just like everywhere, the IU did a lot of hiring and a lot of losing of staff. So that was just one note from HR. But other than that, I don't know if you have any update from your experience on Monday?
Yeah, I will share that. So yesterday, I went to Harrisburg, and I met with Representative, Representative Joe Webster, staffer from Representative John Galloway. I met with Representative Matt Bradford, and a staffer from Senator Katie Muth's office. And we shared our school district profiles with them. We discussed rising special ed costs, and we educated them on the great need for charter school funding reform. And it was also a good chance to network with other school board members. So I think it was a productive day that ended with a press conference in the main rotunda. So hopefully, these, you know, issues around public school support and public school funding are now highlighted in the minds of our lawmakers.
Thank you, Liz. I'm so glad you were able to go. I'm going to say it publicly now, I'm going next year. So this is my last chance next year, so I'm going to make sure I go, PSSA or no PSSA.
You're welcome. And I guess I will do the North Monco Tech report, and that, the highlights from that meeting was the donation of a fire truck from the Plumsteadville Fire Company for the EMS programming. There was a car show on April 9th that raised over $16,000 for the education foundation for North Monco Tech. And it, there's a new student orientation coming up. Letters have already gone out, or are in the process of going out to students who have been selected to attend North Monco Tech. And finally, on June 1st, will be the student recognition of all the amazing graduating seniors from North Monco. Okay, and next, we have school board representative, Serena.
Hello, everybody. This month has been a pretty mellow one for the students at the high school. Spring sports launched into full effect. The Methacton baseball team has a record of 7-2. The Methacton softball team has a record thus far of 7-6. The boys' lacrosse is 8-4. Spring break was between the dates of April 13 to April 18, and it was a great time for students to take time for themselves, wind down, and get some warm year dress before the fast approaching end of the school year. Many students traveled on the France field trip under Mr. Azamora. They loved the trip so much that they came back ranting and raving about where they went and what they did. Prom took place on April 22nd. Though the dance floor was small, it was still a blast for everyone to get to see and hang out with their friends. There was then post-prom. It started at 10:30 PM on April 22nd, ended at 5 AM on April 23rd. The hallways were decked out with all of the students' childhood shows, as well as the recent shows that they currently watch. There was laser tag in escape room, tricycle races, a caricaturist about a balloon art man, a ton of food, a tattoo artist, and so much more. The feedback was astronomical from post-prom. Everyone enjoyed it, and even the ones who were going to leave early decided to stay the whole night. Students were able to relax and have fun with their friends that they may not otherwise have time for. It was a day for the students. The day for cancellations of AP tests has passed. AP testing is fast approaching on the dates between May 2nd to May 13th. You can hear the students talking about how much studying they have to do as their exams are getting nearer. Students are getting more and more excited about the end of the school year, which not including today would be 30 school days away.
Thank you. Next, we have foundation report. We have communications.
I'm just going to comment that I love that you call that mellow with all those wonderful activities.
Good evening. For the sixth year in a row, Methacton School District has been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the NOM Foundation for our outstanding commitment to music education. Now, in its 23rd year, the Best Communities for Music Education designation is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. To qualify for this designation, Methacton answered questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, and support for music programs. Responses were verified by school officials and reviewed by the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. In other news, the district is hosting information sessions on the new full-day kindergarten program that begins next school year. The next session is tomorrow from 10:15 AM to noon at the Lower Providence Community Library. These sessions run through June, and we have a list of the dates and the times on our website. If you've been on the high school campus lately, you've probably noticed a huge sign celebrating the class of 2022. It's located near the corner of Crebel Mill Road and the campus entrance. A very special thanks to our facilities department for building a custom frame for the sign. We hope our seniors, families, and the Methacton community enjoy it. In another high school news, the high school's new hydroponic farm is thriving. Over the past several weeks, students have been and continue to harvest lettuce, tomatoes, cucumbers, and herbs from thousands of seeds planted. They're also engaged in wonderful, hands-on lessons in environmental science and biology. The Windy Hill Farm lives inside an insulated, custom-built shipping container. And this innovative program was made possible thanks to the board, our administration, and the generous donations from community partners to the Methacton Education Foundation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And superintendent's report.
The advisements are listed on the agenda.
All right, thank you. Now it is time for public comment on board action items. The board, this is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of a comment on board action items.
See, where to start? Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Regarding the MCIU district cost plan for '22, '23, why is the cost of the district increasing by 29% over '21, '22? On security services, did the district receive bids for those services? If they're not required, why not get bids to ensure that you're receiving the most competitive pricing for the services that you need? And in connection with that bidding process, why weren't any other service providers invited to present to the board and the public? Curious as to how much the district spends handling on security services? Was the impact of the Cardinal Point contract, if that is approved? And also, I think you need to evaluate what security services are being used. I mean, there's probably three members of the public here, and there's been a security guard sitting in the back the entire meeting. Regarding the area construction and the issues with Autobahn Water, I listened to the work session meeting, and it seems like those issues have been going on for two to three years. So my question is, why didn't anyone contact the PA Public Utility Commission to help get those issues addressed? Autobahn Water is a public utility, they have certain standards and regulations they have to comply with. So I don't know why they weren't engaged earlier on in the process, rather than getting to the point where you're forced to accept what Autobahn Water wants or delay the building opening. And for example, the shallow water main, that additional cost to deal with that is Autobahn Water and compliance with any regulations they have regarding the depth of their water mains. I don't know if that question's been addressed. Regarding Mr. Bricker's budget review for the past five years, I look forward to reviewing that in further detail. But a couple of highlights that, sitting in the audience, I picked up on. It's interesting how the administration presented percentage variances instead of dollar figures when referring to surpluses. It's important to note that a 1.53% average budget surplus variance is equivalent to about $1.8 million, which is about the revenue generator of manual tax increases over the past five years. The 2020, '21 school year, there was not a budget deficit. That lease and debt repayment was not budgeted, so that shows as a negative. So there really was a surplus in those years. There really no years presented with a deficit. And interesting that the analysis did not add back the 1.4 million of legal overspend as well. Regarding the Shenondale Reserve, just to start, while I have time, I have left on that. I find it quite ironic, there's a lot of concern about debt and insurance expenses to the taxpayers. After this board approves a new building that'll open 40% or 60% occupied, and it saddles the taxpayers with $50 million of debt service. I believe that the administration is overstating the complexity of writing a check to taxpayers. I don't know what kind of research has been done. I've done refunds in my employment that you're basically, it might be as simple as dividing the assessed values and prorating it, the refund amount based on assessed values of homes.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I'll come back more later with more on the Shenondale issue.
General, like, what's that? That was impressive on multiple points. I'm going to talk about number four and number five, the change orders regarding Autobahn Water Company. So I get it, your narrative for the approval of number four and number five is that it's all the water company's fault. Because Dr. Zerby, you know, when he gives his talks, it's everybody else's fault. Water Company, Shenondale residents, you know, it's never your fault. It's everybody else's fault. I guess my question is, did KCBA design the school and the sprinkler system? Because everything I know about it, they did. I think the problem is, when KCBA, and I don't know for sure, when KCBA designed the sprinkler system, they forgot to hook it up. Because you got the sprinkler system, then you got the tie-in to the water. Well, my question to you, Dr. Zerby and board, is who is responsible for the tie-in? Who did it? KCBA? Did they have it in the documents? Did anybody plan for it? Or did you just put a sprinkler system in a building and say, well, we'll just hook it up whenever we hook it up? So somebody needs to investigate that. I have an idea already, because Mr. Andrews did a write-to-no request, I got some of the emails between the water company and you guys. The water company lawyer's name is The water company lawyer's name is, um, Michael Clement. Mr. Clement. And you guys went through how many contact people during the whole process? And reviewing what he gave me, you went through three different contact people who were dealing with the water company. Two of them were KCBA's picks. So do you think maybe because you went through at least three, and it could be, who knows how many there are? Could be five, for all I know, on your end, you didn't have one consistent person? Maybe that's why there's a problem. Maybe it's a you fault. Maybe it's on your, on you guys. So I was gonna present this information tonight, I did a write-to-no request, and you're gonna give me 30 days to get it. I'm gonna get it, and then I'm gonna tell you exactly what the story is. Why don't you guys tell us what the story is and be transparent? Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Now we're on board meeting minutes. May I have an emotion, may I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 15th, 2022, and March 22nd, 2022, as attached? Ms. Cancro, a second, Mr. Winters. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. All right, next we have fiscal items, Mr. Bricker.
Thank you, Madam President. This month for your approval, we have the list of bills, Treasury Report, Budgetary Transfer, the Security Service Recommendation to Move to Cardinal Point, the one-year extension of the Food Service Management Agreement with Aramark, which will be the last one, North Monco Technical Career Center Budget for 2223 for Methacton share of $1,343,654, a $4,308 increase from last year. The MCIU District Cost Plan at an amount of $808,243.50, which is an increase of $182,000 roughly. Two general supply bids. The new student activity account for the high school volleyball team. Five repository sales, including the motion to approve the administration to handle all future repository sales tax less than or equal to $1,000. And then there's the Eagleville Master Plan Products, do Master Plan Change Order MC007 for $10,000 for five-star for related overtime with the HVAC systems. PC004 for $3,800 of Myco to relocate the sprinkler piping due to interference with air distribution ducts. And the approval of an allowance adjustment of MC005, an amount of $6,000 for five-star for to connect the condensation line units. Arrowhead Project has the motion to approve L&amp;J Transportation to provide moving services through the extent of the new act, to of the contents to the new Arrowhead Elementary to cost of $32,878. We have the approved the change order GC05 for $7,984.10. GC07 for $1,411.35 for the paving and bus entrance accommodations. And we have the approved the change order GC08, free amount of $37,203.85 to relocate the meter pit. Approved the change order GC09 for $63,348.85 addition to provide an additional four-inch pipe to the building to separate the sprinkled service from the fire hydrants of Audubon Water Company. And then to approve the purchase of additional, I'm sorry, approve the increase, should approve the purchase of additional soil samples for clean fill testing at a cost of $10,000 for host cairns, and approve the allowance adjustment of GC04 at an amount of $924 for the additional soffit to cover the sprinkled piping.
Thank you. Does anyone wanna take any fiscal items separately? Okay, may I have a motion to approve all the fiscal items as presented? Mr. Winters? A second, Ms. Cancro? And discussion? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, so the IU District Plan of an increase of $182,000, I believe it was described in the minutes as something related to special education services, and Dr. Engstad had thoroughly reviewed those increases. Che, do you mind speaking towards the security services recommendation in the process, please?
Yeah, certainly. We devaluated the current company, uh, used, uh, went with Cardinal Point, uh, presented last week, a company that's been contracting with us, a well-known provider. And it's a service contract, so there is no bidding involved in the process.
The important part of all this is that, uh, we've been with Cardinal Point for the longest time, and our relationship with John Ghulie has dated all the way back to the time for which we made the transition from having security services with, uh, Lower Providence Township to a private company. So John actually worked as the, the lead, uh, in the, in the original company that we contracted with. John then left that company and then moved on to Cardinal Point. We kept him, uh, as a, as a consultant, and we spend, uh, anywhere between $10,000 to $15,000 a year on consulting services for John and another colleague of his, uh, I believe, I believe his name is Steve Beck, and he was the former, uh, county, um, emergency management, uh, consultant, uh, that worked actually out of the IU and, and, and for the, and supported the county, uh, school districts. So as a, as a result of that, and as a result of a relationship, uh, and good working relationship with John, and knowing that, um, he has had some success, uh, greater success than, than what we've been experiencing with our existing company, we felt that that move not only made sense for us to, uh, potentially have better success for us in the end, but also we knew fiscally by, by putting in the, uh, uh, the, the, the new company, John's actual time with us would actually be reduced. So we're actually gonna be reducing John's contracts by about $5,000. At the same time, we see minor increases in the hourly wages of the security guards. And, and quite frankly, the, uh, the cost of the security guard, uh, issue is similar to what we're finding, uh, with substitute challenges, similar to what we're finding, uh, or what employers are finding elsewhere. We need to, we need to raise the rates. And, and so, um, you know, this is the most appropriate, uh, uh, process for which, uh, to bring these services and to have a commitment, knowing John's reputation with us and experience with us to date.
All right, thank you, and I think we did discuss the amounts. I, if I recall, it was 380,000 or something like that last week.
It's in that neighborhood, yes.
And it was a, so it is an increase, but I believe we're currently spending 340 or 350 or something like that. I recall numbers like that. I apologize, they're not exact. And then I, you know, the questions related to, to Audubon, uh, Water, uh, have been discussed many times, I believe. But is there a, uh, elevator speech? You can talk towards all the activities as, as quickly as possible, because many of these suggestions obviously were performed, um, trying to work with Audubon.
I mean, it, there's, uh, there's been clear efforts, uh, on the district's part, not only from, from district personnel, but also from, uh, the contractors contracted, uh, to provide, uh, services and/or construction work. From the general contractor, uh, to the, uh, engineers, uh, to myself included. You know, there, there have been meetings with the PUC. In fact, a general contractor, uh, had, had a meeting with the PUC. I had a meeting with the PUC and, uh, and with Audubon Water Company in the meeting. That's as much as I can say about that. But, but I can tell you that, um, we've, we've made a number of, uh, communications outside of the, the normal, uh, process by which, uh, we would commonly think we would need to. Our contractors are, had to consistently, uh, emphasize in the fact that they've never seen anything like this before. This situation is not unlike what Lower Providence Township, as a township, has experienced before. This is, I'm gonna leave it at that. And, and, and I, and I, I, I just wanna make sure that, that, that the board, uh, knows that we've, we've gone above and beyond. Is this, is this perfect? Uh, it certainly is not. Should we be upset about making these additional, uh, uh, expenses? Yes. And I told you that last meeting, and I recognize that. I am recommending, though, that we, we proceed, uh, as outlined, knowing that, um, there, there may be some, uh, uh, challenges in the future, but our goal, uh, needs to be on making sure that school opens up. So I'll, I'll end my response to your question, Mr. Winters.
Any other questions? Ms. Rocco?
Yeah, just, just one more. I, I did pull up my notes from last week, and Paul, it looks like roughly 340,000 for the security contract, Che, to slightly more than 370,000 for this new one. While I do support the change, because I know it's important, I know we talked a little bit last week about looking at some of those fill numbers. So if we could just maybe have a cadence of, of, of having a report on that, that might be helpful, just to know where we stand, because I know that they, I wrote down a 90% fill rate, and I just would like to see that maybe a few months into the new contract. That's all, thanks.
And with respect to that, um, there were some, uh, matters based on our conversation put into the agreement. Now, it's not finalized yet because it, it requires solicitor review. But we, we've, uh, put some, uh, items into that contract that were discussed, uh, last meetings that should help us, uh, you know, provide leverage if in ca, in, in fact, it's not meeting our, our standard.
Anybody else?
Just, just quickly, um, the Audubon Water has been discussed at length, but the member of the public did specifically ask if the PA Public Utility Commission was, um, contacted. And I know they have been, but could we, could, can someone else verify that?
Yeah, the, the Pennsylvania Utility Commission, I, I held, held a meeting, uh, in the middle of December of 21, uh, with, uh, Audubon Water Company, the PUC, and myself. There was a meeting probably within a month or two of the initial construction with the PUC. That was scheduled by the general contractor. And, um, but those are the only two that I know of at this point.
That's perfect, thank you. I just wanted to address that specific concern. Thank you.
Any other comments on, or questions on fiscal? All right, seeing none. Do we have, um, all in favor of approving all fiscal items as presented? Any opposed? Eight zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have personnel. Dr. Sorgini?
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening. For your consideration this month, we have the following personnel items. I will be highlighting those items that are additions since the work session last week. One additional position professional. Two resignations professional, both for re, uh, retirement, including the addition of Ruth Salguero, Spanish language instructor at Arcola. We're grateful to Ruth for her dedicated service to the students of Methacton, and we wish her all the very best in retirement. And although I mentioned her last week, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Kimberly Bean, who is with us this evening. I had the good fortune to work with Kim during our mutual time at Eagleville, and we are profoundly grateful to Kim for her many years of dedicated distinguished service to Methacton School District, and we wish her all the very best in her well-deserved retirement. Two resignations classified, both for retirement. Marie Castleberry, part-time office assistant at Skyview, and Linda Hargesheimer, instructional assistant at Arcola. We're again profoundly grateful to Marie and Linda for their many years of dedicated service to Methacton, and we wish both of them all the very best in retirement. One employment professional. Three employments classified. Four changes of status classified. One uncompensated leave professional, as noted. One uncompensated leave classified, as noted. One sabbatical leave for Catherine Denshaw, social studies instructor at the high school that will be effective for the second semester only of the 2022-2023 school year. A series of supplemental contracts. Additions to the list of, of the district-approved volunteers as attached. One addition to the community education program. An approval of the separation agreement and release between the district, Stefania Maely, and the Methacton Education Association. Thank you.
Um, Madam President, before we take, uh, questions on these matters, it's, it's with profound sadness that I inform the board and the community of today's passing of Krista Wagner. Krista was a first-grade teacher at Woodland Elementary School, and, uh, we've just recognized her nearly just a month ago. But please know that we've, uh, we've engaged a crisis team under the leadership of Dr. Engstad, uh, to support our students and staff starting tomorrow morning.
We are all very sorry to hear that, and thank you for sharing that. And I'm sure we'll be recognizing Ms. Wagner in an upcoming meeting. Thank you. Now, may I have a motion to approve all items listed under Personnel as presented? Ms. Reese? A second, Ms. Rocco? Any discussion? Mr. Winters?
Sorry, guys. Uh, I, I, I think the one thing I would like to see, um, now that we have two additional retirements, if, uh, Dr. Zerby, Dr. Sorgini, if you have or could put together maybe the last, uh, five years of, of retirements or exits out of the MBA specifically. I think it's something that I believe Ms. Rocco and we discussed probably in an earlier meeting and, and had some numbers, but I've sort of lost track. If the number of retirements this year is greater, equal, less than, I think would be a good data point for us and the community.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor of the, um, all items listed under Personnel? Anyone opposed? All right, eight zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, curriculum and programs. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm requesting approval of the following resources for adoption for the 2223 school year. These resources were made available for public review from March 23rd through April 22nd. Three community members did come in and review the texts, but no comments were made. The following resources, McGruder's American Government, Wonders 2020 K to six, or K to five, Wonder Works Grades K to five. Also approval of the following new curriculum for the 2223 school year. Once again, these documents were made available for public review from March 23rd through April 22nd. No community members asked to review those curricular documents, and therefore no comments were made. We're asking for approval for the Science 9 to 12 Hydroponic Farming, 9 to 12 Forensics Lab, and English 12 Literacy Connections. And finally, approval of the following revised curriculum for the 2223 school year under ELA Social Studies, Music, and Full-Day Kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve all items under Curriculum and Programs as Presented? Ms. Purdue? A second? Ms. Cancro? Any comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Eight zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have policy.
Thank you, Madam President. As we discussed last week, really the only revision to policy under second read was the adjustment made to lesson planning. Uh, we did adjust item number five, removing some of the more specific items related to the evaluation that's found in the 82, Act 82 or the Act 13 document now. So there's no need to have those in policy any longer. Everything else is the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all policies as presented? Mr. Young? A second? Ms. Rocco? Any discussion on policy? All in favor? Any opposed? Eight zero, thank you. Now it's time for other. Dr. Zerby?
Thank you, Madam President. All the items, with the exception of item 13D, are the same from the work session. And 13D reads, approve the settlement agreement and release along with the associated trust agreement for student 261136 with special language of the term of the agreements approved by the district solicitor.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all items under Other? Ms. Cancro? A second? Ms. Rocco? Any discussion under Other? I just wanna say thank you to the Backpack Program donors. I know that we, if you check our Facebook page, we've already spent some of the, um, gift card money from Acme, and so it's very greatly appreciated for our families in need. Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Eight zero, thank you. All right, now we have, um, dates for board members' calendar. Just a note, um, that May 18th is a Wednesday because May 17th is Election Day. And I believe that the regular board meeting was previously listed- meeting was previously listed in the work session as May 26. It has been corrected to May 24. All right, next, do we have any old or new business? Ms. Reese.
I, I won't go on and on, and I'm not going to do it justice. And I know Ms. Kelly brought it up, but I would be remiss not to thank all the absolute incredible volunteers for the post-prom. And I, I don't want to stick people out because then I'm going to forget people, but I have to. But first, what is every single volunteer that works throughout the year? I don't think people realize how much work goes into it. I've only ever done pre-post-prom. I've never attended it, but to actually also attend it this year and to see all those wonderful volunteers from the dads at the dodgeball to the, the moms and dads and, and other community members doing security, the, I didn't realize there were 25, I think, chairs of each thing, and I, I mean, I think Ms. Cancro was there. I don't know how many hours you were there. I had no idea. Samira late leads, is going to lead registration. I think Paul Winters was probably up for about 48 hours. And there's just so many more people. I don't want to just talk about the people at this table. Lisa Coop and Gabby Winters and just everybody, every, I don't care if you spent one hour or you spent 24 hours. To have seven, and to the students and their families for encouraging and actually participating, that really shows a level of commitment to our community, because it is, we did have the 20th or 25th anniversary right before COVID, and to see that even after COVID, it was so strong. I mean, to the baskets that they had saved for the two years and had to clean them out and get the raffles and the walkthrough, the fact that 750 children, and that's what you are, I hate to say, to our, to our, to, I'm sorry, our teens, who participated and were safe and had such a great time, it really is incredible. And it was a proud moment for me just to be a small part of that. And, and I want to thank every single person, and I know there's so many more people. And it was really, really amazing. And if you, if you don't follow the post-prom social media, please do, because there's lots of volunteer opportunities throughout the year. I was, when I spent hours with a parent of a first grader, so we have her for the next 11 years at least. So just, it just was really great. So I would really encourage people to check that out. And the news coverage and the smiles on the faces of the kids and the fact that all of our teens are safe and sound, and they really enjoyed it. Other than Paul not letting them out until 5:00 AM on the dot, he stood at that door, holding strong. He wasn't letting them go one second early.
It was 4:58.
And I just want to add to that and say that the students' credit to their families were unfailingly polite at every single interaction. They were, they were great. So it was a really wonderful evening, and thank you to everyone who made that happen. Anyone else for any old or new business?
Just one really quick thing. Dr. Walsh, thank you for the presentation regarding the math program. And I know we've talked about this before, but math seems to be a hot topic across the community, parents, students of many different ages. I would love to know, I had someone text me earlier that their son took advantage of the, you know, the virtual help. I'd just love to, and I know that's separate from this program, I do understand that, but I think it's such a great tool that we're offering, and I know we've advertised it. I would just love an update at the end of the school year on, you know, I don't know if we can track number of kids, but just giving, giving us an idea of what that looks like, because I think it is extremely valuable, and I want people to know about it and take advantage, and it's something we should be proud of. And, you know, kids shouldn't be afraid or embarrassed, you know, to use it, but I just would like that. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none. Now it's time for courtesy of the floor. We provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. You can also submit questions via email to information@methacton.org.
Brian Urshaw, Lower Providence. A couple of additional points regarding the Shenondale escrow and its disposition. One, again, I want to reiterate that I believe the administration is overstating the complexity of writing checks to taxpayers. That should be fully investigated, and if it can't be done before June 30, put the funds into a board-designated fund till it gets resolved. Once that money goes into the Capital Reserve, it's there forever. It can only be spent on capital. So please, consider that. The, the administration's presentation did not factor in the amount taxpayers were asked to fund in legal and professional fees to defend this matter. Over 16 years, that has to be an astronomical number. I've asked the administration for that, and the board for that information in an email, and I hope to get a response before May's work session meeting. Is the district going to take any action against Shenondale to recover some of those costs? As you know, the disposition, disposition of the matter resulted in no change. Status quo was maintained. The district should try to get some of that money back from Shenondale that, that taxpayers were forced to spend on legal and professional fees. Regarding the 2022-23 budget update, I find it interesting and incredible that the February update had a 200,000 increase in revenue and a 200,000 increase in expenses. No change in the tax increase. The April update, revenues go, goes up 1.4, expenses go up 1.4. Coincidence? I don't think so. If I read, if I saw the presentation correctly, 12 people are being added to the budget. When are those people in the budget? Are they all in July 1? I don't think you're going to be able to hire 12 people between now and July 1. So those should be staggered, and you should really challenge the need for those people. Based on what I saw, the updates, there are many opportunities to decrease the amount of the tax increase, to get it to zero, or even to decrease taxes. Does the budget still include a 575,000 increase in legal fees? Since that was put into the budget, you've hired a new person to handle right-to-no requests, and you've changed right-to-no solicitors. Added cost should provide benefits in excess of those added costs. As part of the Shenondale presentation, Mr. Bricker presented the expected increase in interest rates. However, the budget update had a paltry $17,000 increase in interest income. That is clearly understated. The budget still does not address the inefficient use of facilities. Our coal is 40% unutilized. The new Arrowhead building will open 40% unutilized. DEI supervisor was recently eliminated. I didn't see a budget revision to remove that salary and benefit costs. There should be. What, when is the Audubon Elementary property, the former school, going to be addressed? Selling that building could save 200,000 in annual operating expenses and provide $2 million for your precious Capital Reserve fund. Does the budget still include a $200,000 budgetary reserve? In a budget of 115 million and an $8 million fund balance, you should not have an annual 200,000 expense.
Thank you for your comments.
Under board policy, the president can allow me some more time. I have a couple more points I'd like to address that could have an impact on the tax increase for taxpayers. I guess we're disposition for 30 more seconds. Thank you. Last two points. Back in 2019, Dr. Zerby prepared a presentation about excess staffing within the high school and a certain other schools. I haven't seen any budget that has been addressed. That could provide $2 million or more in annual savings. And lastly, have any open positions in the budgets been challenged whether there is a need for those, for those positions to be filled? The board should ask for analysis of all open positions, how long they've been open. If it's been open for, say, 12 months, is there really a need for that position? And I'll thank the board president for the additional time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jim Malik-Worcester. See, ladies, that wasn't so hard. 30 seconds. You know, there's three of us here. Very good. Why weren't any of the presentations put on the website? None of them. I want the agenda. They're not there. Couldn't you have put them on so we could have seen them ahead of time? I couldn't read any of the numbers on the budget presentation, but if I had something in front of me, I'd have been able to. How about printing them up and putting them out here for us? I mean, that's called transparency? I mean, I got to do a right-to-no request for the presentations, or are you going to put those presentations online somewhere? Can you tell us that one? Just getting an answer to that, so this way I can save you a right-to-no request. All presentations, both at the committee and the board, should be posted, preferably before each meeting, if not afterwards. You guys should be selling swampland in Florida after listening to what happened tonight. Shenondale, you stated that by putting the $7 million into the Capital Reserve, you're going to save the taxpayers $4, $4 million. So by spending seven, you're going to save us four. Okay? Will that savings then translate into a surplus? Because if it does, that surplus will be transferred to the Capital Reserve Fund, so we won't get it back. If it's applied to offset expenditures, we'll, we'll eventually drop off a cliff, as you say, Dr. Zerby, we can't apply stuff to expenditures, we'll drop off a cliff. So maybe you can explain how we're going to save four by spending seven. So I understand the position, the fault lies with the taxpayers of Shenondale, right? Said it numerous times. The Shenondale residents were responsible for this whole mess. I just want to make sure I got you correct. So when I talk to them, I'll let them know that you think they're the problem. Now that we got $7 million, you know, we're worried about interest expense? Where was that worrying when Arrowhead hit? I don't know whether you guys know, but the state rankings just came out on niche. 77th in the state high school, 67th district. Six years ago was 11. And you guys are talking about everything, but what you should be talking about is your state ranking being in the, in the toilet. I was provided with a ton of emails, thousands of emails, to and from you and the board. Didn't find one email about state ranking and what we're going to do about it. Not one. But I did find one from a member of the public. Guess who that was? Ms. Cancro's husband. The only person interested in taking care of the ranking is a district resident. So you guys need to go explore what you're going to do about-
Thank you for your comments.
Let me just finish. But you need to explore what your plan is going to be.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm going to finish my sentence. Please. You need to explore your options and your plan for how you're going to deal with the ranking.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, oh, comments wrap up? Yes.
Yeah. There's a few things I want to want to say that I believe the interest income might be lower because we did have a, the, the amount of money that it was in the account because we've been paying for the Arrowhead for the, for the last year was a bigger chunk of change that was in, that was earning interest that has been obviously spent down this year. So the interest rates, I'm sure Mr. Bricker is putting in there is based on those expected balances, and I don't think it's being used as a hedge, as alleged. I believe the DEI supervisor position has been taken out of the budget, but we can confirm that. Dr. Zerby, thank you. The move to the Capital Reserve aspect of the $200,000 is something that we, we'll be up for consideration and discuss at the finance meeting. The point that open positions should not be filled because we can't fill them in today's labor market is, I, I don't believe, I truly believe that Dr. Sergini, Che, Dr. Zerby are always looking for getting to the right size of the organization. There's no additional people being added just for the sake of adding additional people. And if we can't find a counselor for the high school, that's a problem. And just because we couldn't find a counselor for 12 months doesn't mean you just get rid of it. The aspect of these positions being evaluated on a monthly basis, and I trust the administration that they are doing this. I don't believe the principle that there's this sort of interest in building up a kingdom. It's around providing the right educational delivery system. So I, I certainly support the administration in that. In the case of the, I don't know if Dr. Zerby misspoke, but I'm sure he is not alleging that the Shenondale residents are the problem for the 16 years of this tax case. Certainly, that, if that was said, is not the, the context of what it was meant, and I'm pretty sure that was not your words.
Mr. Winters, that, that was nowhere close to what was said, and so I'm not sure where the public comment came from on that, but that is not anywhere close to what I said.
I thought so.
What I said was, as a result of Shenondale, the organization paying in protest, it required the district to levy taxes on the remaining portion of the tax-paying community to fund the budget. That's what I said. In fact, in fact, what's, what's important about this, the actual written transcript that I prepared to present this evening will also be posted along with the rest of the presentations tonight, like we normally do with budget presentations. They're, they're all posted after the fact.
I believe you said that three or four times, actually.
Right-to-no request for that, because they'll all be posted on the presentation section of the board's side of the website.
Yep. Thank you. I'll just stop there. Thanks.
Just to clarify the Shenondale matter and help the public understand, the individual residents of Shenondale do not pay their own individual taxes, correct? It's paid, the taxes are paid by Shenondale as an entity, not by, like, each resident does not send in their tax bill to Methacton. Is that correct? Is that correct?
I, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Okay.
I just don't know the answer. I don't want to say yes, or I don't want to say no. My assumption is that what you're alluding to might be the right answer, but there, it may be a little more complicated than that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. All right, may I then have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Winters, a second. Ms. Reese. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.